Welcome to the Board of Education meeting of Tuesday, March 20, 2012. I would note that there are seven board members present, none are absent. We have been in closed session since 6:00 PM for the purposes of approval of the minutes of 2:28:12 and 3:4:12 for the purpose of employment of employee collective negotiations and probable or imminent litigation. I would ask that you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item on our agenda this evening is public comments. Seven people have indicated their wishes to address the board this evening. I would ask that you, when you come to the podium, that you turn on the microphone. Please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. I will also say that it is not the practice of the board to respond to public comments, but I want to assure you that all seven board members and the administration are listening carefully to what you have to say. I will call the first two names. We'll have the first person come up and the other one kind of wait in the wings so we can move this along. The first person is Vicky Lassard, followed by Tony Manises. Apologize if I've said your name wrong, Tony.
My name is Vicky Lassard and my classroom is the York Library. I am asking you to make your cuts as far away from my classroom and any other libraries in the district as possible. Sometimes folks don't think of librarians as teachers or libraries as classrooms, but I am here to say that I am a teacher and my library is a 21st century classroom. We're each year over 1,600 classes and 80,000 individual students. Research, read, browse, read, study, read, summarize, analyze, evaluate, read, write, cite, record, edit, and read, print, blog, post, wiki, and read. They also upload, download, turn it in, drop assignments, email teachers, and collaborate with classmates. Did I mention they read? It's important that I do because reading is the core purpose of our position and it aligns with every single district initiative, including technology, RTI, the cohort, special education, and yes, test scores. District-wide, the library suffered deep cuts last year through the EPRED process. We lost 40 to 50 percent of our book budgets, more than 50 percent of our supply budgets, and electronic research services were canceled. At the high school, staff was reduced and accounts that supported student multimedia production were completely eliminated. I am grateful to the District 205 Foundation and the State Library per capita grant without which I could not have purchased e-readers for our students. This year, I have my fingers crossed that the foundation will be able to fund overdrive for grades six through 12 so we can acquire more digital resources that other districts fund through their school library budgets. There is a disconnect with communication in the district. The new technology plan states that teachers need continuous and sustainable professional development in digital instructional materials. The plan identifies the building librarians as key providers of Internet safety information, literacy improvement, and the heralds of new and emerging technologies. Then last week, I read and was told that librarians were among, and in the case of the York High School Library, near the top of a list of recommended cuts chosen because, quote, "they would affect as few students and programs as possible." How can this be? Libraries are about helping students with the resources they need to learn and not about supervision. With two librarians at York, the current librarian-student ratio is 1 to 1,300, higher than any other professional that provides services to our students, higher than any dean, any counselor. Increasing that ratio to 1 to 2,600 will further prevent us from giving students the help we need. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tony Manises, followed by Judy Thrall.
My name is Tony Manises. I live at 757 Parkside. I've graduated from the Elmhurst School District. I voted for every spending referendum I could have possibly voted for having been a property owner since 1998. I love the state of Wisconsin. Everybody knows why there's blue shirts here and have watched it tear that state I love apart, and I hope that this community can find a solution without that. And I know that there are a lot of blue shirts in the room, but I would like to put some math on the table here. I know four families in foreclosure. I went through a foreclosure website the other day and there are 90 on the market. And I know people that are voluntarily throwing their keys to give their house to the bank because they are upside down and it no longer makes sense to pay their mortgage. That becomes an undue burden on our housing market, which is going to even further strain the tax base. And until some things are settled, I think that needs to be taken into consideration because I think the teachers' union would support progressive taxation. But property taxes are flat regressive taxes. And if the things that are going to come from Springfield get transferred over to this town, it's not going to affect, it's not going to affect the nice big houses on South Street. They can absorb it. The regressive taxation increase will hurt the poorest people in Elmhurst the most. This does not devalue anything to do with education, but those are mathematical realities of what our market has been since 2008. And I would hope that some of these realities could be part of the negotiation of the community. And I hope that the numbers that we see could be real. Obviously, the Internet has created a great deal of information and we have a large gap of the public numbers that are being given, a budgetary gap of $600,000 to $1 million next year, and then a claim from the other side that there's a $27 million surplus. From what I understand, that surplus number is a mean taken from the cash flow of $52 million and $3 million, that it is not in excessive funds available to the board after the $100 million is paid out. So I want to ask that there's an advocate here, and I know I'm probably not going to walk out of here as a popular guy, but the school board is in this position and the taxpayers in this position, and teachers, I feel for you. You put in your 9 percent to Springfield and they spent it. I'd be pissed. And you want to know something? For you, I am pissed. And so I hope that this town can avoid what happened to Wisconsin by all of us realizing, and I want to sail in your ship, but I would ask that as these things go on, that those considerations for families that will be pushed over the edge into defaulting foreclosure on tax increases be part of the discussion too, because that is a guarantee and that will happen. Thank you.
Next speaker is Judy Thrall, followed by Robin Rogers.
Hello. My name is Judy Thrall. I live at 255 West St. Charles Road. I am a licensed registered nurse for the state of Illinois and I work as a health assistant in District 205. Last week, on March 15, the PSRP Union informed the health assistants that the administration is looking into the possibility of replacing health assistants with nurses. However, no concrete determination of this has been made as of this time, pending discussion by and review by the Board of Education. The administration has stated that they are looking into the possibilities that could replace health assistants either by building, need, or as an entire unit. While the administration concedes that this will most likely cost more money, they feel student need and changing laws have propelled them to explore this option. It is my understanding that at tonight's closed board meeting, you were asked to consider the restructuring of the health service program in 205. As a nurse, I can see the reasoning behind this request, but I also understand that some of the pitfalls in this request. I believe that the district is considering the change due to changes in the Nurse Practice Act, especially where it addresses the care of the diabetic student and changes in the recent legislation regarding the use of apipens at times of perceived anaphylaxis. I believe that you are being advised using the tightest legal interpretation of the Nurse Practice Act and recent legislation. In an ideal world, there would be a medical profession around all District 205 students at all times. In the real world, however, even if you have nurses in the building, they will, there will be times that they will not be there. They can be at lunch, they can be at a meeting, they can be elsewhere. So your first responder at that time may in fact not be a nurse, but another adult in the building. They will be, they could very, the nurses could very well be unavailable in times of emergency. If you make policy based on the tightest interpretation of law, you are in support of the belief that no one else can help a child in distress unless that person is a licensed nurse. If you make policy based on tightest interpretation of the law, you may indeed make the district more vulnerable to liability. There is definitely a place in 205 for certified school nurses. Most of these nurses are wonderful and are able to help with IEPs, 504s, and true emergencies. According to the Freedom of Information Act, District 205 currently spends over $500,000 on nursing services. We are fortunate to live in a community where 911 services are immediately available for true life and death situations. I do not believe that there has ever been a lawsuit against the handling of students from our health offices. At a time when our district is considering yet again budget cuts that will decrease certified staff, I encourage you to exercise due diligence and give due consideration to the way the health services are being restructured. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robin Rogers, followed by Kristi Pope.
Good evening, everyone. I am Robin Rogers. I'm a librarian at York High School and I reside at 822 North Kyler, Oak Park, Illinois. Tonight, I just want to address you all as the Elmhurst Teachers Council representative from the high school level, and we want to express our dismay with the administration's recommended budget cuts. Seemingly, these cuts would have damage to the delivery of instruction and services to children. We want to partner with Mr. Prunow and the board to find reductions that enhance rather than hurt the goals of this district's mission. It's in that spirit that we offer the following money-saving ideas. The Elmhurst Teachers Council believes the district could continue the energy savings program that it had in place until 2009. By employing a supervising energy manager, AKA energy czar, for seven years, the board saved an average of $780,000 a year out of its operating budget. Without continuous energy oversight, we cannot be assured that our facilities are strategically managed and that devices, when they can be, are unplugged. At this very hour, when its hallways and bathrooms are empty, lights are burning as they do often at Oak Park, or excuse me, at York High School. Sorry, that's the other hat I wear. A modest investment in motion-sensitive fixtures would save many thousands of dollars in wasted lighting alone. We could consider regulating temperatures throughout the district. What a waste when teachers have to open windows to make classrooms comfortable for children when a sensible thermostat would do the job and save money. All district buildings could move to more sensible energy plans. We saved $5.5 million from 2002 to 2009, according to Mr. Tuta. There's no reason we cannot continue to build on that conservative initiative and keep cuts away from the classroom where it matters the most. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kristi Pope, followed by Lynn Ferris.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Pope and I teach at Hawthorne School, and I'm speaking also for the Elmhurst Teachers Council. The Elmhurst Teachers Council believes that the district could also realize savings in the way it manages its facilities. We should look at the rates at which we rent district buildings and make sure that we at least cover our expenses. Something as simple as the cost of paper towels could be changed in favor of renewable, sustainable methods. High-speed dryers are available for a fraction of the cost of paper towels. Another unused untapped resource is all of our excellent industrial and family and consumer science programs. Wherever possible, we should allow our students and staff in these departments to provide needed services. York's La Brigade Restaurant already does so in the culinary arts, and our auto shop fixes cars for a price. Communication savings could also be realized by cutting back on unnecessary publications such as glossy brochures and letting our industrial tech printing students do required work while getting authentic learning experiences. It's a win-win when students learn and the program earns revenue. If the board prescribed this as a policy, we would save money and enhance learning by sourcing locally within our own walls. The Elmhurst Teacher Council also feels that the board should take a good, hard look at our technology department budget. Currently, the top five salaried positions total more than $576,000 annually. This does include benefits. While the frontline support tech people are certainly necessary, supervision and management could be streamlined and relocated closer to the teachers the technology is intended to serve. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lynn Ferris, followed by Katie Padberg.
Hi, I'm Lynn Ferris. I'm the ETC Elementary VP, and though my house is in Carroll Stream, I feel I reside at Jefferson School. The Elmhurst Teachers Council believes that in a school board dedicated to transparency with stakeholders, one whose schools are already staffed with articulate spokespeople for its good work, the existence of an Office of Communications and Public Relations needs to be called into question. The Elmhurst Teachers Council feels confident that many of our PTSA and PTA members would be happy to help carry the message of our excellent educational programs to the press and to the wider community. Also, the Elmhurst Teachers Council believes that costs for outside accounting, educational, and legal consultants are not justifiable when capable professionals inside the district, operating with available information and cooperative teams, could do the job as well. People within the district should be the first sources tapped. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Katie Padberg.
Hello, my name is Katie Padberg. I live in Lombard and reside at Sandburg Middle School. I'm an eighth grade social studies teacher and I'm the Elmhurst Teacher Council President. The Elmhurst Teachers Council believes the district would improve educational achievement and save significant funds if it moved from its top-heavy centralized administrative model towards a localized collaborative team model of management, where research says the best professional learning community decisions happen. Elmhurst schools would be more like those in world-leading countries like Finland if we abandoned our expensive administrative status quo for a leaner, more effective, and more teacher-led approach to education. Of course, it would require an investment in high-quality, ongoing professional development for staff, but equipping the frontline workers with the best resources and skills is a proven method for bringing down costs while bringing up service, according to the Pearson Foundation report, the OECD report 2004, and Arne Duncan, Secretary of Education, 2011. The Elmhurst Teacher Council believes we can do more with less, and we want to partner with the board to move in that direction. When collaborative teams feel empowered to make their own collective decisions, focus and motivation are gained. Our district leadership team is one example where this collaboration is already working. In these tough financial times, when teachers are being asked to make financial concessions for the greater good, we would ask the same of district administration. As teachers are asked to pay for their own insurance, up to 30 percent of the cost, administrators enjoy 100 percent coverage. Some budgetary recovery could be realized if there were parity between staff and administrators in these costs. If the board makes cuts away from the classroom, we can preserve and even enhance the quality of our educational program. We are the Elmhurst teachers and we are committed to excellence. Thank you.
The Director of Communications has asked me to make sure that there's no one else wishing to address the board this evening. She noted some confusion earlier. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board verbally tonight? Seeing none, thank you. I will repeat, we've listened carefully to what you have said and we will take all of your suggestions into consideration. The next item on our agenda is Superintendent Communications. The first topic is the PMA five-year projections. Mr. Prunow.
Yeah, let me turn this over to Mr. Wellington. He will introduce PMA and our projections for five years that we do this annually. So, Chris.
We have Doreen Linderman here from PMA. She is a senior financial analyst. PMA does financial projections for approximately 160 school districts. Doreen works with approximately 30 to 35 school districts, and she's been working with Elmhurst School District 205 for five years.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. I've been invited tonight to walk through the district's five-year forecast with the board, and what I have in the slides, we have, all of our charts are in aggregate and they include all of the operating funds of the district. And so we are looking at the educational, operations and maintenance, transportation, IMRF, and the working cash funds. We're pulling information from the district's historical audits, the AFRs that are filed with ISB, as well as the district's current year FY12 budget that is filed in the ISB format. And we do not include the debt service fund or any capital project monies, funds, because those funds cannot be used for any other purpose. So that would kind of skew, especially if there's a project going on that would skew the operations. We'll start by looking at the revenue side, and this chart shows the district's annual revenue, the dollar amount and percentage of the budget. So you can see the sources of revenue are mainly the property taxes, $83.5 million, which is 84 percent of the annual revenues coming in. Other local, another $5.5 million is an additional 6 percent, so about 90 percent of the funding the district receives is from local sources. The state's providing about 3 percent through the general state aid formula and another 4 percent for all of the other categorical and reimbursement-type grants. The federal portion this year is about $3.3 million, which is 3 percent of the budget. This is slightly higher than usual because we still have a little bit of money coming from the stimulus grants, the ERA funds that are still flowing through the budget. It's $308,000 included this year, which will go away. So we'll focus mainly on the assumptions that are going to be material for the district's projections, looking first at the property tax assumptions. For property taxes, because the district is tax capped, the most important factor in projecting those numbers going forward will be the CPI. The CPI is used in the tax cap formula. It takes the prior year dollar amount, increases it by the cost of the Consumer Price Index, the inflation index that is used in the formula, and then there is new property that's added on top of that. So the biggest factor is going to be the CPI number that gets applied to each levy year. And this chart shows historically, we have six years of historical CPI and these are listed by levy year. So the 2011 levy is the levy that the district had approved and filed this past December that will be used in the calculations for property taxes that are going to be paid in calendar year 2012. So those are, that's for the bills that are going to be coming out in the next couple of months and be paid in June and September for DuPage County. The 3 percent is the CPI that was the year-over-year increase that came out this January 2012 is the 2011 increase that gets applied to the 2012 levy for taxes that are going to be billed and paid in calendar year 13. So there is a lag in time from these indexes, which we end up paying, for example, the 3 percent increase. We're seeing those costs already because inflation has gone up 3 percent, but we won't see the revenue on the tax side coming in until calendar year 13, which is a mix of fiscal years 13 and 14, because we receive money in June, the fiscal year ends June 30th, and we receive the rest in September. So the CPI projections that we've used going forward, we've used a five-year average because the CPI number is difficult to project. It can go up and down all throughout the year. It's only the December-to-December number that gets used in the tax cap formula. So for example, right now, we're seeing gas prices increase daily, but whatever, that, we're paying for that now, but we're not going to know if that's going to be factored in until this coming December for the increase. The second most important number in projecting the property taxes is how much the district will have in new property, which is new EAV coming onto the tax rolls for the first time in that levy year. We have the chart that shows historically, back in 2007, we had $62 million in new growth, which was creating additional revenue for the district. That dropped to 40, then 23, and this last year, the 2010 levy was down to $19.2 million. The 2011 levy, we're assuming $10 million for 11 and for 12, and then we've increased it only to $15 million because we're not seeing any more new construction starting right now. It's going to take a while for the economy to come back and for people to start building again. The 2011 number will come out in the next couple of weeks. That number will be finalized and then we can update the assumptions and put in the actual amount and provide that to the board. The last factor in calculating your property taxes is the change in the existing EAV. So how is the market value or assessed valuation changing from levy year to levy year? This doesn't affect the dollars that the district receives. It has a minimal impact. What it does affect, though, is the tax rate that the taxpayers will see on their bills. Because we know the dollar amount is set by the CPI, once the EAV is finalized, they back into what the tax rate would be to generate the dollar amount. We have, in 2008, we had a 7 percent increase and then things started to turn around. Not surprisingly, 2009, we had a very slight negative, and in the 2010 levy, we saw a decrease across the district of 8.3 percent. We're assuming another 9 percent decline in the 2011 levy and then another year of negative at 5 percent. Because the assessor uses the sales that are generated throughout the three previous calendar years in determining that, it takes a while, as you've seen probably on your own bills, for the assessed valuation to come down. It doesn't come down as quickly as the market prices. It's going to take a while for those increased valuations to come back onto the tax roll as well. So we've held that flat for the next three years following and then just a very small increase at 1 percent. Okay. I didn't.
That's all right.
That's okay. Okay. Next, we looked at the general state aid, and that is about, what did we say, 3 percent? Yeah, 3 percent of the district's budget. Each year, when the state does their budget, they set the foundation level that will be used in the general state aid formula, and this is kind of a minimum funding level that they're putting out there that should be available per student or per ADA. You can see the 2008, it was at 57.34; that was increased in '09, and again in 2010, to 6,119. That foundation level has been set in place now. This is the third year in fiscal year 12 that they have not increased that foundation level. And in fact, they were not able to fund that at 100 percent this year. They had to prorate that and they're only going to pay 95 12, that they have not increased that foundation level. And in fact, they were not able to fund that at 100% this year. They had to prorate that and they're only going to pay 95% of the district's entitlements. Because the state is having difficulty funding this, we've assumed no increases going forward to the general state aid foundation level. And in fact, we've assumed that they will have to continue to prorate that. As EAVs are going down and local resources per student are going down across the state and poverty numbers are climbing, it's putting pressure on that state aid formula. And as the entitlements grow, the state's budget is not growing in relationship to that and they've not had enough money to fund those at 100%. For fiscal year 12, the district is actually, per the formula, to receive about $366 per student. They take the 61.19 and compare that to what the district has available from property taxes, divided by the number of students that you have. The district also receives a poverty grant of about 391,000 that's paid through the same pot of funds that the general state aid is being paid. So the entitlement, per the formula for this year, was 3.2 million, but because of that proration, the district is losing about $160,000. So this chart shows us for fiscal year 12, then, the prorated amount, we're anticipating to receive $3 million, which is down from what the district had received last year. And that's going to be due mostly to the proration. Going forward, we've assumed 90% funding and based on the EAV assumptions, the general foundation level assumptions, as well as enrollment, we're anticipating the funding to remain right there at the 2.9 to $3 million level. For enrollment, I have a couple of years of historical enrollment here by grade and so you can see how that has grown since, for the last two years. For calendar year, I'm sorry, for school year 1112, we're looking at 8,220 students. That will change sometimes on a daily basis, so we're looking at about the September 30 number, which is what you would need to staff for. The district has projected enrollment of some small increases year to year. We're looking at about 216 students over the five-year period. And based on that, looking at the certified staff assumptions in the model, this year we have 617.6 FTEs, or full-time equivalents, that are on the salary schedule. We have that broken down by grade level and then those are not, that are not directly assigned to a specific grade level, we've included it as the other category. Based on the enrollment projections, we're showing some growth in the certified staff, assuming the same staffing ratios that we currently have. We've also assumed in addition of another 5.2 FTEs next year for some needs that the district will have for ELL and special education. We've increased special education then 1.5 and the ELL 3.7, and then we've assumed three FTEs for special ed each year beyond that. Also, in fiscal year 13, which doesn't show on this chart, we've also included eight additional aid positions for special education. On the expenditure side, this chart shows all of those operating funds combined. And you can see that salaries and benefits are going to be the majority of the district's expenditures, which is typical for any school district. The salaries are about 68% at 65.4 million and benefits 12.6 million, another 13%. So over 80%, just slightly over 80%, is personnel-related. Purchased services is another 10 million, which is 11% of the budget. Supplies are 5 million, which is 5%. Capital outlay is only 218,000 in this year's budget and then non-capitalized equipment, 217,000. So very minimal capital purchases in this year's budget. Other objects, the 2.6 million, the largest expenditure in that line item, is going to be tuition costs for students that are placed out of the district. The assumptions we have for the expenditures for salaries, obviously, we don't have a contract in place currently. We're still with negotiating on that. What we have used in the model is the assumptions that came from the February 2012 tentative agreement. The health benefits, we've assumed no increase for fiscal year 13, a 6% for fiscal year 14, and then 8% each year thereafter. And then the other expenditures, while we went through line by line on all of the fund expenditures, they're increasing by about 2.5 to 3.3% on average for the non-personnel-related So what we do is we take this year's budget, which is our first column here, the budget for FY12, the revenues and expenditures. We're showing an operating surplus of about 1.9 million, but that's above the line. You see there's other financing sources and uses of 2,017,000. That includes payments for the debt certificates that the district has outstanding, as well as all of the capital leases they have for equipments in place. So after we net those together, we're at about a $48,000 deficit, which in a $100-million budget, that's essentially balanced to me. Going forward, if we look at all of those assumptions and project through the model, we can see that revenues are growing next year by about 1.2%, but expenditures would be growing by 2.8%. And you can follow that through. So next year, we would be looking at about a $1.2 million deficit. In fiscal year 14, we're still in a deficit, but in fiscal year 15, we actually will have those debt certificate payments are reduced. You can see that that transfer line goes down to about 1.2 million dollars and then we're able to, to help balance out that budget a little bit. But based on those projections, the fund balances then at the bottom of the page, we are projecting that if the district comes in at budget this year, the fund balance would be about 28.3 million, which is a 29% fund balance as a percent of expenditures. That means that fund balance, you would have about three and a half months of expenditures on hand at June 30th. And then following those projected surpluses and deficits, the fund balance over the next five years would decline to 24% and just under three months of expenditures on hand. What we also need to look at, this chart shows us then what those fund balances are year to year. And so the top line, the red line, would be the June 30 year-end fund balances, starting at the 28.3. And then by 2017, with all of the assumptions we have currently in place, we would be ending at 27 million. The blue line is showing us where the district is at, where you have your low point in cash. Because you're mostly DuPage County and you get all of those tax monies, they're due June 1st and June 15th, the district is receiving about 50% of that budgeted property tax revenue. So 50% of the $83 million is essentially coming in within the last 30 days of the district's fiscal year. So from that red line, we back out those June tax receipts and we also back out the June expenditures, because you will have payroll and accounts payable going out in the month of June and say, what does your low point look like in cash? Because we want to make sure the district will not have a cash shortfall prior to receipt of those taxes. So it looks like that this year we would be okay. Next year is very, very close, coming down to about $200,000. And that's where the board needs to take a look and decide what their tolerance is and what they want for their cash balances. In the third year in this projection, we actually have a negative 1.4 million. And what that means is the district may be in the position to have to go out and issue tax anticipation warrants to help fund those payrolls and accounts payable until the June 1st tax money start to come in. So you would essentially be spending that money before June. Even though at the end of June, you have a large fund balance, remember, all that money is coming in in those last 30 days. So if you are spending the money prior to, you would have to go out and do borrowing for that. And then the, another thing to point out is, on this chart, the red line is fairly level. It's declining, but only by about 1.3 million dollars. But the blue line is actually differing from 1.8 million down to about a negative 3.6. And the reason for that is even if we're having a balanced or close-to-balance budget, each June, that tax dollar amount that comes in is increasing by CPI in new property. So each year, a larger and larger number is coming in in those last 30 days. So we have to take that into account as well when we're working through the budget. Are there any questions? I know we kind of went through this at the Finance Committee meeting once, but if any other questions have come up, I would be happy to address those. Yes?
Mr. Collins.
You brought up the subject of tax anticipation warrants. If you were to do that year after year, would, first of all, would you advise doing that? Year after year after year? What is the effect?
It wouldn't be advisable to do that.
Why not?
Essentially, it's one of the first signs of deteriorating finances. So looking at, if, make this a personal situation. So the red line is maybe what my checking account looks like on payday. But really, how much money do I have to spare? How much do I have the day before I get paid? So if I'm spending money before it comes in, I...
If you could put that on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, so if I'm spending money before it comes in, obviously, that's a sign that I'm spending more than I, than I should be. So it is a sign of financial distress, the beginning of financial distress. And each year, once you start doing that, typically what happens is unless the district makes significant cuts to the budget to reduce spending, usually the amount you have to borrow would grow each year, because that June number coming in is growing every year. So just as this blue line demonstrate, demonstrates, sorry, that low point in cash, even though the red line is fairly stable, the low point is declining without actually increasing your fund balance year to year.
And by, if you continued to borrow year after year, wouldn't that, would that negative balance increase at a faster rate?
Well, you'd have additional costs for interest as well as legal costs for issuing the debt. So there would be money spent to do that.
I add up the four years of negative numbers and assuming that we would borrow in each of those years, and it adds up to 8.65 million. So if I wanted to balance my checkbook at the end of the fourth year, what would I have to do?
Well, to balance your checkbook, basically, you need to have a surplus in your budget that would be equal to that increase in June taxes.
Or cut my budget by 8.65 million dollars.
And there's not much you can do on the revenue side. We can't control the CPI, we can't control the property or the EAV numbers. The only thing the district really can do, other than student fees and those types of things, which are very small portion of the budget, is to address the expenditure side.
Okay. So just to repeat what I thought, what I thought you said, is the top red line is what my checking, what, to an abyss of my checking account, what it looks like on July 1st of every year. And this blue line is what my checkbook looks like on May 31st of every year.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So would you advise a board to manage their expenses to this bottom blue line and make sure it's above zero?
Ideally, you would not want to have to go out and borrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Linderman? Thank you very much. We did have your, the benefit of your expertise in our Finance Committee meeting and the committee felt it important for the entire board to, and the community, to see this presentation as well. Can you hear me now? I don't understand why.
The speakers went back to rooms. I don't think they're activated. And so in order for them to hear well, we might want to pause for five minutes and reset the system, the audio system, otherwise we'll have to continue. But they're having trouble hearing in the back.
No, let's, let's reset the system.
Yes, please.
I think it might be like a five-minute, five-minute break.
Yeah, let's get this straightened out, please.
Are there any further questions for Ms. Linderman of PMA, of the board? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And this is, of course, on board docs for the public to see. And we thank you. Next item on our agenda is the fiscal 13 budget. Mr. Prunell.
Yes, this evening, we want to present to you a tentative list of recommended budget reductions for the following school year. Let me briefly talk about what that amount is and how we arrived at that amount. It appears that we have a budget shortfall next year of approximately $1.2 million. $600,000 approximately is because of our expenditures outpacing our revenue, which isn't a huge amount, but it is a half a million dollars plus, that expenditures are outpacing revenues. Therefore, if we have a balanced budget, which the board requires, we would have to reduce our budget by $600,000. Secondly, however, as we look into next year, there are some staffing issues that we will have to increase. And this is either due to mandates for special education or mandates through ELL programs. And so that totals approximately another $500,000. So we are looking at approximately $1.2 million. Now, obviously, we are months away from a final determination on a budget recommendation. And so the difficulty here is we're trying to project many months in advance of what our final budget numbers will be that the board has to adopt in August. But because of a couple of dates, we have to start this budget process now so that we are in a position to make sure that we are making the necessary decisions in order to have a balanced budget for next year. And probably the biggest, it is the biggest date that we're facing, is April 10th. April 10th is important because certified staff must be riffed by that date if we have any plans of reducing certified staff in the district. After April 10th, we are no longer capable of adding to that list. And so what was important for us is to start developing a budget, start looking at budget reductions, and start that process so that we can hit that April 10th deadline. The other budget items and the other budget reductions are not under that kind of time pressure. But the certified staff is. And so that drives part of this decision-making here in March. I want to talk about how we developed the budget reduction list also. We began by looking at a lot of sources across the district. We looked at the EPRED report from last year. We gathered information. We had meetings with principals. I solicited and asked for staff recommendations for budget cuts. Some of that you heard this evening. That was highlighted by people who spoke to the board this evening. We took all of that into consideration and began making a list of what the possibilities could be for budget reductions. I will tell you, the difficulty we had right up front is that after two years of budget reductions in this district, and especially following last year's $3.8 million reduction, the budget reductions that we are facing now are significant in the sense that it's going to things that really may affect students, may affect, obviously, affect staff. And none of these budget reductions have, have come easy or without a lot of agony from my cabinet, from the administrative team, talking to staff, looking at all the things that were possibilities. But the fact of the matter is, we do have a $1.2 million shortfall next year at this point in time, and we have to respond to that in order to have a balanced budget. I think your PMA presentation previous explains the difficulty. If you don't start balancing the budget every year, you start dipping deeper and deeper beyond the capability of bringing the district back in the long term, and you just can't allow that to happen. So as difficult as these decisions are, in fairness to the taxpayers of Elmhurst and fiscal responsibility of the Board of Education, we have to come back, as difficult as this is, with budget reductions. And we know this affects people's lives. I don't want the board to think that we took this lightly, that we just threw numbers together and put this in. We know this affects people. It affects how we do business in the district. It affects students. But again, we're facing some very, very difficult decisions after two straight years of budget reductions, going into a third year next year of further budget reductions. So what you have this evening are really two lists of budget reductions. The yellow highlighted list is the list of budget reductions... The yellow highlighted list is the list of budget reductions that we are recommending as an administrative team, that I am recommending as the superintendent. In addition to that, however, we have listed alternative budget reductions. The reason I listed alternative budget reductions is that if the board looks at the administration's recommended list and disagrees either in total or in part with that list, you would know what other replacement list you could go to in order to plug in something that you don't want to cut in the administrative recommendation list. And the other thing is, I think it gives you unfortunately a foreshadowing that if we continue to have negative numbers in our budget, even if you adopt all the yellow items this year, you're going to be looking at that alternative list in future years because we, those things, once they are gone, they are gone. And you're trying to recapture dollars that have already left, and that's a difficulty we're having this year after the EPRED process with $3.8 million. The other thing is, I want to make sure we were as transparent as possible. I didn't want us to just come up with a blank list and say, here's the recommendations. Nothing else was discussed, nothing else was looked at. I think that's not fair to the community or the Board of Education not to have a full list of what those alternatives were. And so, you know, I wanted to make sure that everything that we at least initially considered for this year as possible cuts were put in front of you. So, with that, what I'd like to do is start highlighting the recommended list and then go through the alternative list, and then answer any questions that you have about the list as we move forward, if that's okay with the board. Here we go. Okay, probably, again, these are, the first ones we start out with are two areas of really, one of the big areas of certified staff. The first one is utilize as targets as opposed to hard-line caps for class sizes in K through eight. What we did here is, we really looked at our staffing numbers and took a worst-case scenario because, again, the April 10th deadline is our one opportunity to do the worst-case scenario and riff the teachers we may need to riff in order to balance the budget for next year. What I'm hoping is that as this is a worst-case list, after April 10th, and as we know more about the budget, and as we think, see things shake out, we may be very well able to recall some of these teachers back to their positions as we move forward. But again, we get one opportunity. In this list of, the first list of budget reductions, what we did was, we did not touch K-1, 2 as far as numbers. We kept the K-1, 2 numbers low in staffing and did not look at raising caps or even looking at caps in those grade levels. Three through eight, we did look at caps versus targets. And let me talk about the difference that's, for the board to understand. When you have a hard cap, you will say that we are not going to allow a class in a certain grade level to go above a certain number. So, in third grade, we will not allow a class to be over 27 students. That is a hard cap. What that means is, if I have three sections of 27 in a building, when I get one more student, the 28th student, you are devoting a full staff member to create another section in that building for that one student. In these budget reduction times, that is very, very difficult to sustain because for one student, you are increasing your staffing numbers pretty dramatically. And so, what we looked at is, rather than hard caps, we looked at targets. We would allow staffing to go in, again, as a worst-case scenario right now, with the understanding that we may have 27, 27, and one class of 28. We staff that at three rather than four teachers. We will monitor that as we move forward for the rest of the year, and we'll monitor it in terms of our other students coming into that, that building at that grade level that we need to raise it because now we have all three sections at 28, and now we're at a hard cap of, you know, we're looking at a cap of 28. The other thing is, we want to look at the nature of the classroom. We want to look at the building. We want to look at the challenges and the needs of the building. So, as, again, we looked at the worst-case scenario, what we're trying to do is have flexibility, and as we move forward after this date, we'll start monitoring with the principals what their numbers look like, what their classes look like, and have the flexibility to add staff. We did reserve some contingency staff in order to do that. But again, with the April 10th deadline, we want to go with the worst-case scenario here so that we know we didn't fall short of what we had to do. So, that's kind of the philosophical approach we took to the K-8 reductions. At the next one, at increasing staffing ratio at York High School, we looked at, and we had not done this before in this district, we looked at what the ratio was of the number of certified staff who are classroom teachers who had sections versus what the ratio was across York on a per pupil basis. And what we did, we met, and we met with every principal as we did this, elementary, middle school, and high school, but we, as we met with the York administration, we started talking about what was a tighter ratio that we'd be able to accomplish without a large decrease in, an increase in either class size in our core classes or classes that students needed that would be eliminated. However, what this ratio does do is that it forces us to look at classes that may have 10, 15 students in them as electives and perhaps not offer those classes next year. And so, that is a consequence of doing this ratio, is that classes that we usually offer may not be offered because we can't afford to staff it at those low numbers. Again, they are looking at those numbers, but in talking with the York administration, they believe they could drop that ratio to what you see here right now. You've already heard about the decrease of the certified librarian at York. There are presently two certified librarians there. Our recommendation is to move that to one. You heard tonight some of the consequences of that, and those are listed for you. The next one is stipend budget reductions at the high school, library assistants, assistant coaches, secretarial, tech, and vocational. We are estimating, and I want to emphasize estimating, savings of $60,000, or, I'm sorry, savings of $140,000 for that. But again, pending what the board decides either tonight or by April 10th, we're going to need time to look at what the consequences are of that. We believe that the savings is there, but we would have to look at how we restructure some of those areas, the librarian, the secretaries at York. Also, when it comes to the coaching positions, we are not eliminating a sport by doing this, but we are reducing the number of assistant coaches across most of the sports areas. And so, staffing-wise, for sports per team, you will see less assistant coaches. And so, that's how we believe we can get to $140,000 in estimated savings through those stipends. We are looking at reducing one maintenance position in the OMM budget. This is a position that has become vacant. We have not filled it, and right now, we are recommending we not fill that. There will be restructuring at the Maintenance and Operations Department in order to absorb that position and not fill it. So, that is not a layoff. It is just, we're not filling those positions. And I will say, going into the future at this point, any position that becomes vacant, we're going to take a good, hard look at whether or not we need to fulfill that position or not because those are opportunities to reduce staff without layoffs, and we don't want to miss those opportunities. In some cases, we won't be able to do that. The function will be too great. And I will tell you, on all these, again, we are going to decrease the efficiency sometimes of departments or what we're doing because, you know, if there was any low-hanging fruit in the budget in the past, it's gone now. Rearangement of Unified Arts and PE at Churchville. Churchville has a different configuration that the other two middle schools have, and there is a cost to that. And so, we are recommending that, that we work with the Churchville staff and the administration to get the Unified Arts program the same. The next one is reduction of Guidance Counselor at Sandberg. Because of a decrease in enrollment in Sandberg for next year, this would put their ratio in alignment with the other two middle schools, and so, that's a reflection of an enrollment drop at Sandberg for that middle school position. Reduced technology budget. Dave has come to us and has explained that there are some things they can put on hold. There are some things they can defer in the technology budget, and that is $120,000 savings. Also, reduced technology budget in telecom and internet. Again, we think these are savings that can be accomplished with very little impact, especially the second one. It's more favorable telecom contracted services. We're getting better rates, and so, we're able to establish that savings. So, the total for that ranges from $103 million to 1.0, almost $1.7 million.
You skipped a few at the top.
Oh, I did? I'm sorry.
Starting at the top of the second page, down to technology.
Okay, I'm sorry. Elimination of middle school library assistants. I think that one's self-explanatory. There's one in each building. We would talk for the elimination of those. Reduce elementary music from twice per week, 60 minutes to once per week, 45 minutes. This would reflect the art program and the same amount of time devoted to art as to music. Eliminate middle school transitional Spanish. I'm going to let Dr. Johns explain this one because I know there's been a lot of questions about that. Senator Johns?
The transitional program is used in two ways. One, to help students who've moved in from outside of the district, whose world language skills lag those of Elmhurst students. And so, this is a way in which students get support in developing a world language in what's pretty close to individualized learning environment. Also, at times, we use the world language time slot in the student's schedule to give them interventions, and when that happens, they fall behind in the traditional world language program so they can be slotted back into transitional world languages so they can continue to get their skills and don't fall too far behind, and in some cases, catch up to their peers who stayed in the world language.
And then, finally, the one I did not cover was the reduction of middle school student council. Right now, we have three to six stipends of individuals who receive that. We would be reducing the number of stipends for that position for student council, but there would be an impact on what we presently do with student council at the middle schools. And so, that in total is the recommended list from the administration. So, at this point, I would entertain any questions from the board on that level of budget cuts. And the cabinet has also, you know, been intimately involved in these and can answer questions from board.
This is the third year that I have the privilege, unfortunately, of sitting at the board table. I don't consider it a privilege, but having to make budget cuts, and I did go back a couple of years, and we made 2.8 million worth of budget cuts, and then we made $3.8 million worth of budget cuts, and now we're faced with budget cuts again, and it's unfortunate, and I keep seeing the same things coming back to us. So, I don't think that there's really much on this list that hasn't been brought forth to the board before for consideration. I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Prunell, can you help us? There were some concerns when we looked at increasing class sizes last year. One of, I think, our stated goals is to make sure that we are super focused on the gaps that kids might have, kids that are not at grade level or above grade level, and we're trying to reduce our achievement gaps. So, how, could you just talk a little bit about your philosophy for the 3 through 8th grade? There were some concerns that were expressed by at least one individual to myself and, I think, a couple of the board members about schools that have large populations of either ELL, low-income, kids that are already at risk that are not yet at grade level, and how we are going to balance and make those recommendations.
Well, right now, again, I'm going to go back to, this is a worst-case scenario. So, we kind of use the same ruler for all the buildings across the district. But as I said, as we move forward and as the budget frees up or as we see what the consequences are, we would be looking at those kinds of buildings or those kinds of students or those kinds of classrooms as the first ones that we would look at to put staff back in to lower class size at an upper grade level. But again, because we're in this April 10th unfortunate deadline, we're going to go worst-case scenario. But our plan is to then come back, work with the principals, and we already have, we've already met with the principals, and we know which classes we're probably going to look at first because either there's a high at-risk population, there's a high-yield population, there happens to be a high special education population in that particular grade level, and those would be the priority to put staffing back. The other thing we did not touch is any of the reading support throughout the district. We felt that was important because as we try to reduce the achievement gap, we want to make sure the interventions are there to accelerate learning for those students. So, you do not see that on the list of the elimination of the support programs for those students. And the reason is, we know those students are already at risk. We feel that that kind of cut would really reduce the chances of us closing that achievement gap for all students.
I just have two other minor questions. Can you just clarify, for the middle school student council piece, that's not an elimination of the middle school student council. That's a reduction in the teacher stipends. Is that a correct statement?
It's not a reduction in the teacher stipends. It's a reduction in the number of teachers that would receive a stipend. So, right now, and somebody help me on this, we have how many in each building?
I believe that it is three per building, so we would be looking at the potential of reducing it from three to either zero, or we could also do one or two. That's why there is a range listed.
Okay. And the other question I had is, you said that we would not, for the stipends budget reductions at the high school, and looking at the assistant coaches, you said that we're not looking to eliminate a sport. I just, are we looking at eliminating or reducing the number of teams, the number of levels? Is this going from three levels to two, not having three football? I'm just looking for...
I don't believe so. I think this is a matter of looking at, let's say, the football program, we, you know, and I'm making the numbers up. We have a head coach and five assistant coaches. We would move that to four assistant coaches at the football program. I think it puts, you know, obviously, it puts more pressure on the coaches. They have to do more, more kids, more kind of coaching for those number of kids per ratio. But my understanding was, it would not affect the number of students that would be able to go up.
Mr. Collins.
I joined the board the same time Ms. Hirsch did, and I have to say that my time on the board, I've really learned to hate the spring because each of the three years, this is the third year in a row, that we're going through this exercise. In the last two years, we've laid off at least two dozen people, and now, we're looking at more. And what particularly bothers me is that these are staff members who are doing a great job. They're touching our students. They're adding to the quality of our schools, and I just hate to do this. My heart goes out to all of them and all their families. What particularly bothers me this year is that now we're cutting firmly into the muscle of our district. We're looking at cuts that reduce the richness of our curriculum, and it's tragic, but unfortunately, it's unavoidable. We have to keep the balance, the budget balanced. If we don't, we run into deeper and deeper problems in the future. Some things, either our revenue has to increase, or we have to continue to cut positions. When 80% of your expenditures are salaries and benefits, it's only logical that the most, the majority of it comes out of people, and it is tragic that we have to do this. So, with that preference, let me ask just two, about two programs. First of all, we're investing more in special ed and ELL. Can you just explain a little bit of what we're doing in those programs? And then, I have a second question after that about the transitional Spanish program.
Let me, the special education, Meg can respond to that.
With regard to special education, I can't comment on ELL, but with regard to special education, our numbers are simply increasing. We're seeing kids with more significant needs all the time. Many of the students are move-ins. You can see the numbers in early childhood are increasing, and that is a good predictor of the fact that special education will be increasing in this district for some time to come. We have students who are transferring into the district who are already in alternative placements, and best practice would be with these students to keep them in those alternative placements until the team, the specialized team that's working with them feels that they're able to reintegrate back into a regular education setting.
Do you know off the top of your head... Do you know off the top of your head, so the split between ELL and special ed roughly, is it 50/50 in terms of our half a million dollar investment?
It's a little bit more on the ELL end.
A little bit more on ELL. So my question is, do you see that trend in special ed continuing? I mean, is this...
I do.
So we should, we should kind of get in our minds that year after year, we're going to be investing more and more?
I would say that that's on trend with probably most districts.
Okay. Dr. Johns, you want to talk about ELL?
As Karen Military reported at last, sorry, at this month's subcommittee, we have some services that we haven't been providing to our ELL students that we need to start providing in order to be both compliant and to provide effective services for ELL students. We want to make sure that they're able to access the richness of our curriculum, just like all the students of our district. We do know that as a subgroup that they are underperforming, and we know that to be both compliant and best practices, we need to provide more services and support for them. So in many cases, this is additional staff to work with these students in a special environment or a closer environment to support them. We're looking to add approximately 3.7 teachers to the ELL program as a district. We've been figuring about 60,000 per place, just to give you a dollar figure of how much that might be.
Thank you. Both absolutely worthy programs and programs that especially in ELL, it sounds like we did not meet up to the state standards and we need to get there. But it's also clear, I mean, from the budget at a glance population or publication, the ELL population in this district is increasing at ever-so-rapid and increasing rate. So as a board member, we should just get used to the idea that we are going to invest more and more each year in both of these programs. Okay. And then my question about transitional Spanish, I mean, just personal value, I think world languages adds a richness to the curriculum. And because we have a rich curriculum, it attracts people to our town and raises our property values. So I have to look, you know, I just want to look carefully at any time we look to eliminate any of these programs. Can you tell me what the expectation is to what happens to these kids that, and my understanding is, these are kids that go into a reading program perhaps, so they're taken out of world languages, and they complete the reading program, and then they're reintroduced to world languages through the transitional Spanish program. Or, as you say, kids that come in to our district that have not had grade school Spanish and they're directed to Spanish. So what would, what's the alternative if we eliminate this program?
We have two options on the report. The first option is simply a half reduction of the transition program so that it would be available to fewer students. And either those who don't fit, or if we went to a model where we eliminated transitional Spanish altogether, we would have those students take a different unified arts program as they, to fill in the space once they're either waiting to get caught up with their peers or waiting where they could take Spanish or transition, I'm sorry, world language one at the high school. So we would have them take a unified art. It may mean that they have to take a unified art class that's a grade level below what they currently are, but I think that is something we thought that would be an option worthy of consideration, having a 7th grader in a 6th grade unified art class versus the dollars that we're talking is something that we think needs to be balanced out.
Just for clarification, you keep saying unified arts. Do you mean Spanish?
No, I'm sorry. For unified arts, typically, we're talking about our industrial tech classes.
Okay. All right. So I mean, would you envision that, you know, a 7th grader that is, that is pulled out of world language to go into, say, a reading program, gets their reading level where it needs to be, and then is reintroduced Spanish, maybe they go to 6th grade Spanish? Is that the idea or no?
We simply talked about unified arts. We did not talk, at least in the discussions we've had so far, about reintroducing it to a lower level of Spanish. We talked about filling in the remaining amount of time in the student's schedule by having another sequence of unified arts. Unified arts classes are a number of weeks in length. There's a rotation the students go through, and we would just fill in, as they transition out of a reading program, they would fill into a unified art program.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Bloom?
One other question on this, I think I did say that the curriculum is self-paced and we provide our students interest in accelerating mastery, is that you give them the ability to work on their own? And then my question would be, is there a technology enhancement? Is there a different way to think about this where, you know, is there an online version of something? If you're talking about trying to fill a gap to catch people up to then transition them over, is there, you know, maybe a middle ground here where it's not ideal, but it fills the need?
At this point, quite a bit of work has been put into the transitional Spanish program that we have, and it is, is a very solid program for what it's attempting to do. We feel that a language as such, to have a classroom teacher in the room is very beneficial. Obviously, I think we are all acquainted with models of online learning for languages that, that people have used outside of schools for years. So far to date, the program that we have in place has been pretty effective and highly refined. So that's what we've been looking at at this point.
Do you have an idea of what the typical timeframe, I mean, are they pulled out for six weeks? Are they pulled out for three months? I mean, how much of a gap are they trying to close?
The variance is usually pretty considerable, but minimum would probably be six to nine weeks at the very minimum.
Any other? Ms. Stufan?
Yeah. Actually, I have a bigger picture question about the process. I know that we've, the board has been in the unfortunate position two years previously and now again this year, and I'll foresee it next year, to do reductions. And as Mr. Collins said, it's getting leaner and leaner. I would like to address a little bit the process of how do we determine the impact to student outcomes, because that's our objective, and, and closing achievement gaps and increasing academic achievement in the district. So, you know, balancing that with budget cuts, which are necessary because we have to have a healthy budget and a balanced budget and healthy enough fund balance to be able to even get interest loans or tax anticipation warrants. How do we measure? How are we tracking? How are we looking at, what are the unintended consequences? And at what point are we cutting too lean? How do we look at that? How do we track it?
Well, I think overall, the easy, you know, the obvious question is, you start tracking student achievement over the past three years and see if there's a fallout in student achievement on how we measure student academic achievement. I'm not sure that the, let me say this, the first two on raising, on looking at staffing ratios and looking at that, I don't think you're the point, and this is a personal opinion, I don't think you're to the point where you're going to see a dramatic change in student achievement. I just think what you're, what we're trying to accomplish is just be more conscious of how we do staffing and, again, putting those teachers back in when we think there's a need to fill and those kinds of things. Again, we didn't look at intervention programs for that reason because we don't want it to affect the achievement gap. Saying that, though, I'd be sitting up here and telling you a story if I didn't think it's going to have an impact, especially when it comes to some of the relationship issues that students form with students, the student at the high school that was really loved to take this particular class and now we can't offer it because we don't have enough students who are interested in it. Those are the difficult choices you get into. And those will have a consequence. And I have to be honest and say, that's why this list is so disturbing. You know, cutting a librarian at York High School, there's less interaction with the students, there's less service for the students at York High School, what the librarian does is valued, and again, it's going to be a drop of service for those students. So, you know, to say we're going to have an analytical matrix that will track this, it doesn't work that way. It's, education has never worked that way. We can certainly track some of the data in that, but I don't think that tells the whole story. I think there are people and individuals that make a difference in this district, and you risk, you know, riffing that particular teacher who really made a difference with a student, and now because of this process, they're eliminated. Again, I want to be, I'm going to put an optimistic hat on, though. I'm hoping that as we really become more efficient in how we do things, really taking a look at, do we have to spend particular dollars for this? I'll give an example. We have really held the line on consulting services that in the past, this district had a lot of consultants who came in and we were paying them significantly to do a number of studies, to do, develop a survey, to do all those things. We're trying to do that in-house now. And so we have really tried to cut back and say, we're not going to go outside just to hire consultants. We think we've got talent inside. We think we can do a lot of things inside and use the talents of our staff, use the talents of our administration, and just become a better district by building internally. So those are some of the things you can do. So I'm hoping things like purchase services, over time, will significantly go down and do those savings. I think some of the other things we've done, we're looking at, for example, facility rental, that was brought up tonight. The board already knows. We're going to have a meeting with all of our facility users and say, look, we need to recoup the costs of using these facilities. And I know there's going to be community pushback for that because it is going to have the potential of raising, raising their charge for using our facility. But I have a really hard time sitting there and saying, we're using general fund dollars to fund people who are using our facility because that's coming right out of instruction. And, and I want the community to lose, use our buildings, the community, you know, to tax themselves in order to have these facilities. They're great facilities, and I'm not looking to make a profit. But what I am looking is to make sure we can at least break even so that I'm not taking instructional dollars out of the general fund to support that. And, you know, I can tell you, it'll be controversial, but I think it's a decision we're going to have to look at and make. We want to talk with our facility users first. We're not setting a bar until we talk to them, but I think we want to have that rationale going forward. Now, how you track that over time, Karen, that's tough to do. Does that have an effect on how people view the district? Does it have, their satisfaction level may go down because now I'm being charged what I don't think I should be charged and I was never charged in the past? And you may see, if we were checking that matrix, you may see a dissatisfaction with some of the community members about how we're using the facilities.
And it also goes hand-in-hand with the district performance indicators. So, you know, I just challenge all of us, as we are reviewing all the district performance indicators that we're defining, that we're looking at, you know, is there a better metric or does this, you know, metric help us better assess the decisions that we're making and the impact to the students and staff? I have one detailed question, you know, more around, at the high school, I know that we, it is awesome what we are able to offer there all around, let alone the courses required and electives. So as we look at what courses, what the student enrollment is and determine maybe that's a potential course that we can't offer, are we looking at just this current year? Are we looking at past trends? How are we approaching it? Do you know?
No, I don't know. I don't know if Charles or Brad had that discussion with the high school administration. What I'm used to in the past is sometimes what you do is you say, okay, I don't have enough students to offer it this year, but I'm going to offer it every other year. And now I get enough students to enroll in that class, they know it's coming around. But that's a communication issue that we're going to have to do going forward to say to students, you know, we may not have enough, but look at your schedule for next year and try to plan that in because these are the courses we may only able to afford every other year.
And I guess that's what, that's what I want to highlight is, I really want us to look at it that way, not just one snapshot in time. You know, this is more philosophically, how do, you know, what has our trends been? You know, we have a lot of people that have been around at the high school, you know, what does it look like? Should we not offer it at all? Or should it just be every other? Or is there another way that we can slice this? And, and secondly, and most importantly, communicating it to the community so that they understand what, not necessarily the rationale, but what are we doing? Is it going away or is it here this year and it might be, you know, up next year? Because it's key for planning. And we're asking parents to be more involved with, you know, the planning of the four years at high school because it is important because they're planning for college. I mean, that's reality.
Ms. Ebner?
I wanted to just make a few comments about the first row for class size. As I look back historically, in 2009, for the three to five, the three to five grade level, there was a class size of 24, and then the next year, 4th and 5th grade went up to 26, and then through the EPR process, that number went up to 27. Now we may go to, you know, 28. And I just want to reiterate, through the EPR process, for class size, there's a 14.8 certified staff reduction, and it was the elementary and middle school that took the brunt of that. It was eight elementary and 6.8 for the middle school. So for class size, it went to the elementary and middle school. And I'm just wondering, over four years, for especially the three to five grade level, I'm wondering with the principals or teachers, how they, when we look back, how, what's the, what's happened from '09 to now through, it's going to be like four years of increasing class size? Has there been feedback on the progression of that? Or I just want to take a careful look at that, especially the three to five grade level because that's taken the most hit over the past couple of years.
Well, I can tell you, the principals, you know, don't like, you know, if I'm a principal, I don't want class size raised. I really don't. So, you know, that is a given. I mean, class size does affect, you know, the tone, the relationships, all of those things. Saying that again, you know, we're trying to hold the line and not raise it much above what it was this year, which was 27. Can I guarantee that? No, because I don't know, as we move into the budget, what else is going to come down on us from the state or anything else. But I think philosophically, when Brad and Charles and I have talked, probably our first look at is to look at that grades three to five and start restaffing there as staffing becomes available. The next priority would be middle school, quite frankly, especially if we see class sizes significantly up or we have more students enroll and we have to add a section. Last year, we staffed conservatively, but we added staff even after the school year started. We did that at Bryan because of increasing student enrollment. So that's also a possibility. As we see students enroll, if we know the registration's there, then we can adjust and staff for that. What's very difficult right now, again, is the worst-case scenario in the April 10th deadline. I mean, you have to, you know, we could say, okay, we're not going to staff 3-5 at that ratio, we're going to staff it at 26, but then, you know, you are increasing your staffing costs significantly, and now we have locked ourselves in for the next few months based on that budget. And I don't know if Brad or Charles have anything to add.
The only thing that I will add about when we were reviewing the numbers is, I have gone back and looked at them. When we're looking at the three to five, the class size cap that was used was 27. Right now, what we have done is looked at the class averages, and instead of automatically rolling in another class when the average reached 27, we have simply allowed it to continue with the lowest number of classes available. There is no class that has a class average that exceeds 27.667. So when we're looking at this, we have relatively kept the line without automatically rolling it over into the cap pace, the cap piece. If we were to have used a hard cap, we would be adding 12 sections in 3-5. Now, by using the target, it gives us some discretion to look at various buildings and various grade levels to make some educated decisions about that particular piece. We did the same thing with the elementary schools or the middle schools. Instead of using the class averages when they're looking at 7th grade English, we, when we were looking at the averages, we ended up rolling the averages up, similar to what we did at Bryan last year. And Bryan ended up having some scheduling difficulties early on in the year due to kind of fluctuations of when kids need classes, and we built back in .6 FTE to them to relieve some of those stressful times. It's not the be-all-to-end-all solution, but it does give us some wiggle room and some flexibility to be able to make informed decisions about when to add classes. We also have a list of target classes that are right there at the 26 to 27 in elementary that we know that these are classes that if we can get, if there's another FTE that is out there, that is the first place that we would go with those teachers because we know the students, we know what the principals have told us about a particular class, and we know the demographic piece that ranges from a wide variety of things that have already been talked about. So I don't want you to walk away thinking that we have abandoned the, the number... So, I don't want you to walk away thinking that we have abandoned the number system from the EPR process and that we're now running in the 30s. I don't want you to walk away with that. I want you to walk away with the idea that the target, we're using a very small target, just not a cap at this point in time.
Mr. McDonough.
I see there's two columns of range of reductions, upper and lower. Is it your intention, then, to do RIFs to the right column, the larger number at that? And the expectation is a certain percentage will be called back the way you described?
Yeah, I am really hoping. Can I absolutely guarantee that we're going to be calling these people back? No, because I don't know what's going to happen at a variety of levels, transportation reimbursement, all of those things at the state level that are still up in flux. But the fact of the matter is, I am hoping as we get closer, we can fill some of these positions back in and just be able to recall people. The unfortunate thing is, going through this RIF list, people will be riffed in this process, which is always unfortunate because, you know, I've been through it as a young teacher, and it adds uncertainty, it adds stress, you don't know if you're going to be called back. We're really trying to do this consciously. We're not trying to do it blankedly and just say, "Okay, we need, you know, we think we need 40 positions, so we're just going to lay off to make sure we're absolutely sure." We're trying not to do that. We're trying to make it a conscious decision, but at the same time, protect our position for what the budget may bring us when we come to August. So, and again, what we've told the principals is, we're going to hold some staff out for contingency. So, as these numbers go up, we will, we know we're going to have to add staff. We have done that last year. We just gave examples. That's probably going to happen again, just as a ratio of students to teachers.
I especially appreciate your point when you said, "The richness of our education." I think you said that. And then, Jim, you also repeated that as well. It's a really good point. Just a little guidance, it's a little hard to reach down and to second-guess your professional judgment. In a lot of cases, you're doing apples and oranges. But there are certain things that become Elmhurst, and I think we can identify certain things, and richness seems to be a good way to approach those intangibles and those comparisons. I guess my goal in this would be to kind of identify an approach that we support, I think, as a board, and let your professional judgment come in. When I do think of rich, richness, I think that probably the physical education item in the white that is below the line might possibly be moved up to give you more flexibility in terms of determining where things might be. I'm looking particularly above the line at the reduction of electives at York as a consequence of this. And I'm remembering when we were at Sandberg for the Race to the Top, Race to the, Race to Nowhere film, Mr. Collins used a great line there. He said, "How can we get our kids college-ready without burning them out?" And I think one of the ways that you do that is with electives. And so, I'd really support your looking, again, at the reduction in choices at the high school with a view towards substituting something below. I want to make sure I offer something in return, but I think that's important, too. As we try to increase rigor, that increases stress, and I think we need to be aware of that.
Mr. Prunow, did you want to speak to the items in the white column before we take any more comments here?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that was coming.
That's all right. Are you going to?
Any other questions, any other questions for the recommended, at least right now? And again, this is, I know this is the Board's first blush at this, and so, you know, we are talking about adding another meeting April 3rd. At that point, you will have time to contemplate, look at this, and then add your input. So, I don't, you know, expect the decision tonight from the Board of Education. But, you know, we want your input, especially probably going into the April 3rd meeting.
Just one, I want to piggyback on what Mrs. Stupin and I think Mr. McDonough said. In terms of the high school elective piece, I understand that we could probably, we might have to nip and tuck, but I want to strongly encourage the communication aspect of it and the planning aspect of it at the high school so that if there is always a schedule that we know that the, I'm not picking on anybody, but I'm just going to pick one art. Okay? So, we know that every fall, we can offer this art elective, and in the spring, we can offer this art elective. We can no longer offer the same elective, both electives for both fall schedule and spring schedule. We can get creative with scheduling that thing. We can offer those things, rich opportunities to our students. But I think the most important thing is that we communicate that and we set that out as we do our four-year plan so that we have some tradition and expectation built in for our parents. Because, again, parent of a high schooler, you do plan out four years ahead to make sure that your kids can get everything. So, that message back to the high school and looking at it in that approach, I want to reiterate that.
For the range of reductions, the bottom of the second page for yellow, we're, if we're at a $1.2 million deficit, are you targeting the right, which would be $1.7 million, or we're going to target more closer to $1.2 million?
I would target closer to $1.2 million. But again, I want to give the Board of Education a range, give you some flexibility on, you know, your input and what you may want to pull off the list or add to the list, all of that. So, we actually went over, the list is $1.3 million. So, you know, you've got a little wiggle room there. And then, obviously, 1.7 on the opposite side. The other thing that's going to happen, though, you know, the caveat here is, as we go into planning and as we actually do these reductions, my experience is that you're never right on target with what that reduction produces. There's always fluctuations. There's always caveats. There's always something that you thought you could do, you can't do. So, I want to emphasize, these are estimates going in. Until we actually look at them and get direction from the Board that we're going to seriously look at those and start planning for them, that's where the rubber hits the road, quite frankly, and you see whether or not you can do these reductions and what the impact is. And for some of these, we're not going to do that ahead of time before we know the Board wants us to move forward on that issue because it's a lot of time and effort to put in and then not have it.
Mr. Collins.
I just want to go back to the staffing ratio at the high school. And it sounds like from something you said before, you may not be able to answer this question, but do you have a general feel how it would affect elective courses versus class sizes in core curriculum? Is there any feel for that or too early to know?
I believe when the recommendations were put forward, that there is a balance between increasing some class sizes at some major core levels like social studies or math, but then there is also the balance of potentially eliminating some pieces of unified arts at, or the elective group at the high school. So, there is a balance and there is a range. Some of it simply depends upon how much they're asked to do and then also where student choice is in that matter as well.
Difficulty, too, is when students put in their schedules. You have like a third-period math, and every kid has that third-period math. So, you know, your core goes way up in that one, and then you could be in fifth period and that same math course has less students because of the schedule and how it works out for the students. So, that's the randomness of developing a high school schedule. What we're hoping happens is that we can build that, the administration can build a tighter schedule that takes into the account, and maybe students don't get their ideal schedule that they wanted, but we're getting them to the classes they need with keeping the class size kind of evenly spread out over these classes and not have some of the fluctuations that you sometimes see at the high school.
Are you wanting to go ahead with the white?
Okay, this is, again, the alternative list that we're going through. And the first one is the district office receptionist. We have an office receptionist here that mans the front desk. She does multiple duties right now. She is, one of the things is the HR department, I think by any standard, is understaffed for a district our size. And what we've tried to do is combine her duties with some of the duties of HR. At the same time, she is the person that greets the public. She also kind of secures the building. She's the one that opens the doors. Thirdly, we've talked about rental facility issues and may, becoming more responsive and having people charge more. I will tell you that one of the big issues that results in that is when people are paying more, they expect rentals to be run very smoothly, and their schedules are going to become very, very important. This person does that right now. And so, one of the issues we would have to look at if we eliminate this position is, who is going to do the rentals? Keep all that straight and make sure that our customers now, which are paying customers, that we're honoring what those schedules are. And whoever does that is going to be a key person because, again, the demands from our renters are going to go up and they're going to expect it. And the pressure is going to be different from all of us because administratively now, what I'm going to tell my administrative staff is, if we do this, we're going to honor the renters. And if you haven't reserved the building or that facility ahead of time, it's a problem because, you know, the option of kicking people out at the last minute is not going to be an option. So, again, this person is one of those positions. They would have to really try to find a way to restructure here at central office. Classroom technology budget, eliminate the classroom technology for the second year in a row. This is not a preferred option for us. It's on the list. It's a possibility. But one of the things we're dealing with, as the Board has talked about before, is kind of the equity between buildings on the new technology that's coming forward, whether it's smart boards, iPads, all of those things. And we use that kind of funding to try to even that out and make sure that our technology is spread evenly across the district. That would be a problem moving forward in this area. Reduce middle school librarians. Obviously, we've talked about librarians again. This would actually be having less actual librarians in the middle school, sharing those between, not desirable. And we would have to man those then with library assistants rather than a certified librarian. Again, not a preferred option for us, but is in the realm of possibilities as we move forward. And I just, thank you. The next one is reduce middle school PE teachers. This reduction of one instructor in the middle school would result in larger class sizes, and that would be a challenge to current facilities and programs. We would have to make some adjustments in the current curriculum to meet this expectation, specifically in the health and fitness program. So, again, gyms, those facilities are only so big. You add more students, gets more crowded, that becomes a problem for the, how you're delivering that curriculum. Eliminate middle school computer lab assistants. These are people that are both sometimes in libraries and sometimes in the labs. They assist classroom instructors to individual technology needs and supports for students. Reduce ELL teaching assistants. We just talked about adding ELL certified teachers. This would be the elimination of the teaching assistants that go with that program. We currently have six. We reduce that number to four. What's the next one? Collins. Eliminate the reading TOSA. This is a reduction of 2, a .2 allocation for a reading teacher on special assignment to the district office who oversees the literacy programs at the elementary level. This is a position that's been in position for a while. Next page, elimination of middle school intermurals. There is an intermural program at the middle school, not the competitive program, but intermurals internally. That would be a reduction of $18,006.30. The next step would be to eliminate middle school sports altogether. Obviously, that would have implications for the high school programs, for the opportunities for students to be involved at the middle school. That would be a $206,000 reduction. Eliminate Spanish at the elementary schools. You know, that richness that both John and Jim talked about, and I know other Board members share about Elmhurst, this would be one of those things that you would not offer Spanish at the elementary schools we do now. Again, savings of $236,000. Reduce the staffing in the communication department to do some consolidation, reduction of some support staff. Obviously, that would have an effect on the communication for out of the district, the public relations part of the district, of a lot of the communication that goes out to staff. Eliminate an internal auditor. The internal auditor was added a few years ago at the request of the Board of Education because of concerns about how we were compliant with budget and making sure that we had best practice when it comes to the business area and the financial management of the district. We still think that's an important position, and we would be concerned of the elimination of that just from the financial audit standpoint of what we're able to provide. Eliminate elementary instrumental music, goes for itself. I mean, it's, you know, two, big savings, but talking about the richness on both those, significant hits. Reduce elementary school librarians. Again, library service, we talked about this, but you could have the option of sharing librarians across elementary schools and then staffing and filling in with library assistants when the libraries are not there. Districts do this, unfortunately. They share library services, but it's not an ideal model by any stretch of the imagination. So, you can see that that's the total of the alternative reductions, comes up to about another $1.2 million to $1.4 million. And then, we totaled out all the possible reductions going forward.
Any questions about the non-preferred list, if we could speak of it that way, Mr. Bloom?
Yeah, just a question about middle school intermurals and middle school sports. Do we have any idea of participation rates? I mean, in middle school, it's boys and girls basketball, boys and girls volleyball, cross-country and track. And, you know, for each one of those, what is the participation rate? How many kids does this impact?
I'm going to turn to Brad. I don't know, I have not seen actual figures, but Brad, fresh from the middle school wars?
Wars? I don't know if I'd say that. What you're looking at is basketball. Most of the teams are probably keeping somewhere between nine and 12, nine and 12 athletes. Volleyball, you're looking at, again, another full complement, probably looking in the 11 to 15 range.
And this is just seventh and eighth grade?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, your track programs at all three middle schools are very large. I don't have the numbers for you right off the top of, top of my head, but, and same thing with the cross-country programs. For obvious reasons, you're looking at big student participation groups.
So, those are relatively inexpensive to provide those, the bigger programs on a per-participant rate?
On a per-participant rate, obviously, the more students who are participating at the middle school, because the salaries are relatively the same for those sports, there are some subtle differences, but the cost piece is obviously going to decrease the more students that you have participating at a very, at a quick rate. At intermurals, that depends upon the season and the time, but I believe that all three middle schools offer very strong programs that our sixth graders love.
Sure. And I'm a big supporter of athletics and involvement in activities. It's just that when I read about elimination of sports and drive such programs provided by locals such as Park District, a lot of these kids are already in those programs. I mean, my kids are in the middle school. The kids that play on the basketball team play airborne or they play Y. I mean, we're not depriving these children of basketball. I mean, if you, I would be interested in seeing the facts on the participation rates and what else they're doing. I just, and it's not to say that I don't support the programs. It's just that we're painting a very sad picture here, and it stinks. And I'm with Jim on the fact that I can't stand sitting here right now tonight. It pains me. I didn't join the Board to have to make these kinds of cuts, but that's what we signed up for. And, you know, so it stinks to go through any of this, but that's the job that we signed up for. But, so I just want to make sure that we're fully factual on kind of what we're looking at here and the students impacted and kind of really where we're going with it.
Could I ask a question? A year ago, we sat here, several of us, and made horrific budget cuts, as we've already referred to, and we passed a balanced budget. Now, at the end of the year, we're $600,000 short. Can we say that most of that is due to increased staffing and special ed and ELL and some of these other things? I know there was a piece of the transportation fees that we were unable to recoup that we thought we would, but I just want to be able to say to people in the grocery store, you know, "You did that last year. Why are you doing this again?" And I understand the piece going forward, but can you talk a bit to what happened this year to cause us to be short?
Chris, can you come in? Chris, can you come in a minute?
We've definitely experienced hiring additional staffing during the year, not only special ed, but also just additional kindergarten sections where the E-Bert had a hard cap. And so, if, if we got more than the hard cap, we were adding additional teachers to, to, so that happened throughout the year, but also, we hired additional special education. So, I would say staffing definitely would be the biggest, the biggest additional cost that we have experienced during the year.
I can add to that too, Susan. We did have an additional section of early childhood added and in January, which also required us to add a couple of aids. Additionally, we had some students who were able to come back from outplacement, but in order to do that, to come back to their least restrictive environment, we had to add the support of a classroom aid and at times that did require us to hire a handful of additional PSRP.
Mr. Collins?
Just a clarifying question. It's not that we're going to end this year $600,000 short, it's our projections for the next academic year that our revenues are $600,000 lower than our projected expenses. Is, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, it's, it's not like we're ended $600,000 a whole this year, it's just next year's projections that we're dealing with here.
But in fact, we had thought that the cuts we made last year would last a while.
Yes, and in fact, you know, in, in our committee meeting, and I guess I'll talk during committee reports, but you know, that was one of my complaints. It's not PMA's fault, they're just the people with the model, but the curve always looks the same. We, you know, the out years look okay, but next year, you got to cut your budget. And it's been that way and that curve has not changed, the shape of the curve has not changed every year that I've been on the board and every year I've been on the board, we say, well, if we cut deep enough this year, we won't have to next year. But I'm just waiting for one year on the board when, when I, when I don't have to cut the budget.
Mr. Blum?
Not to rain on Jim's parade, but reference the slides we saw about an hour and a half ago. This is the third year in a row and I'm guessing PMA showed you that the next two years were iffy at best. We have a PMA projection that shows the next two years, next year stinks and the better years, a little, next, the third year is a little bit better, but this isn't going to be a surprise when we're sitting here next year. I think we talked about this. And, and how do we start this conversation with the community, you know, around how much we're going to fund education in Elmhurst and what it means? I mean, when I sit on a number of boards and we look at our companies, we have contingency plans. If we are down, what are we going to do? And we sit around the table and we talk about what does this mean if revenue drops by this much or what does this mean if we lose this customer? And, and we have these kind of Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. I don't know that there's a reason why, given the projections we just saw, we can't have that conversation for next year as well and the year after as well. It says if we, if these projections materialize, to Dave's point, you've got these white things and he's got a sneaking suspicion that the, the white boxes down here are going to be sitting, we're going to be sitting here talking about them. How do we group these towards a more higher level discussion about what we provide, you know, our citizens, our students and what our parents want to provide and what our taxpayers want to pay for? You know, fees is another piece that didn't end up on the table that we didn't talk about here, which, you know, there are fees at the high school and are they staying, are they not staying? Is our philosophy that rather than cut, we would rather go ahead and add a fee and keep it offering? And if, if so, let's communicate that, that says, you know what, we want to offer as much as we can, but I'm sorry, but you know, we are going to have to start charging for some of this, or we can just eliminate it. But it's not our choice, it's the community's choice and we've got time to have that discussion. So, how do we put a, I mean, E-Bert was imperfect at best. So, I mean, and you're, you guys are new and it's kind of tough, you know, doing this very quickly, but at least for next year, or maybe we can get some of this in later this year, how do we engage the community in that conversation and start to plan for two and three years out so that we've got some type of contingency plan or picture there? So, we're not doing this piecemeal, one year at a time?
I think it's doable. I think, you know, what you're going to get into though, is I would hope we can really work with all of the staff and there's been suggestions here this evening, some of the long-term things, for example, the energy is our thing. You're not going to see those savings right away, but long-term, is that a strategy that we put back in place? Or do we do it internally? We really stress with all staff that we're going to be good energy users and we're all going to pitch in and we're going to make sure that things are shut down or that we don't have private refrigerators all over the district or private heaters or that kind of thing. I mean, those are the kind of things you start talking with all of us to say, let's look at ourselves in the mirror. Can we, can we consciously do those kind of savings ourselves? And, and those kind of long-range things are things that we can, we, there's no reason we can't start talking about it even after this process is over, going into the fall of next year, looking forward. You know, again, the problem always is how much are you going to cut? Can you, can you know that going into the fall? But I think the P, if you go by the PMA projections, you know you're going to be somewhere. There's going to be another reduction hit. So, how do you start positioning yourself for that? And having discussions, like you said, with the community because this is part of the future list. It's probably not all of the future list, but it's probably the future list that's coming forward. We're out of some of those options. So, how do you start having that conversation and say, what does the community want to do for their schools? What does the state want to do for our schools? You know, but, you know, that's the frustrating part. I mean, you know, I'm tired of hearing everybody say, education is important, education is number one priority, but then when it comes to the budget stuff, it somehow gets down on the bottom of the list and it's, it's starting to look at cuts and I think, you know, we're, we still haven't seen our payment from the state. We're still one payment behind. And so, how does that, how does that match up with education's number one? You know, that's a frustrating part.
My, my point is, is, I mean, these don't have to become true, to your point, that if you have enough runway and you see what could happen and you still have a chance to change behavior today that may impact some of that, it's a worst-case scenario. It's if this happens, you know, what are we going to do? I mean, we are at a point now too, where when you're starting to cut muscle, you start, you need to have a more strategic discussion about it. You're starting to get into music and language and art and some of the valued, you know, the richness of our community. And these are community conversations. These aren't easy kind of, you know, board table discussions. And so, how do we start this long enough? Because my sneaking suspicion, you've got everything. I mean, you cut $3 million last year, it's another million this year, there's nothing left that's not going to really hurt, not that this doesn't hurt already. And so, you know, how do we start to have that and say, okay, we may not get there, but let's go ahead and have that contingency plan in place so that we've had these discussions so everybody knows what's going to happen?
Here's the other wild factor that I worry about and that is the increasing mandates coming from either the state or federal government that are unfunded and are going to cause us increases in manpower somewhere in the district. And I know, you know, Central Office has always criticized for, you know, how many staff we have and all of that, but take some of the initiatives that are coming down. Take the initiative of teacher evaluation tied to student achievement. How is that going to work? Who's going to upload that data? How is that data collected? Who's going to do that? Same thing with teacher evaluations related just to the whole process. You know, again, I said, human resources understaffed. I mean, they were really stretched this year just with the new SB seven law and falling into place for creating a RIF process that's taken a lot of time. Who does that? How does that, and that's a manpower increase. And so, I think the other discussion we have to have is some of these ideas that come down, yeah, they sound great, but who's funding them? And how does that happen so that the requirements that we are being made to do, it's not free. I mean, I just got a civil rights report that we have to fill out coming up in August, okay? I'm not arguing that the civil rights report may be necessary, but I, it's going to take man hours, it's going to take principal time, secretarial time, and we do this every other year for the Office of Civil Rights. Is that really necessary? And I know this is big item discussion, but you know, if budget continues to be a problem all over, I think that, you know, all of us, public officials and everybody have to take a look and say, do we really need this? Is it absolutely necessary and what is it going to do? Is there data that we just are collecting because we want to collect it or is it something that, that really is meaningful that's going to change education and have that data? And that's the insidious thing about technology sometimes is, well, we can ask for it, why don't we ask for it? You know, that's almost the attitude. We're not sure we need it, but we're going to ask for it anyway because now it's real handy to get. I mean, that's a dangerous precedent for me to start getting into.
And maybe, Jim, can we add this to, is this a finance committee thing that we could, can we, I mean, that long-range conversation, does that belong in, on our, on our agenda? I don't want to lose this because I just think it's an important thing to start.
Yeah, I, I agree. Chris, can we put that on our next agenda, please?
In that blank space at the bottom, it doesn't matter.
So, what do you need from us tonight, Mr. Prunow?
You know, tonight, I really don't need anything. I, I would recommend that we go to an April 3 meeting. We, I asked board members to reserve that. I want you to have enough time to look at these, think about them. And then what I'm looking for April 3 is some clear direction on where you want to go with these budget cuts. And then from there, we'll move forward again, April 10. We will be prepared to do the certified staff briefing and then move the process forward from there.
Ms. Hirsch?
I just wanted to, I have no problem with the finance committee coming up with a structure and looking at the budget long-term, but I think maybe also board improvement, board communications. I think a big part of this is communicating our current state and communicating and educating our community members. I think the budget at a glance is a great start, but I think it could be one of our outreach as a board, starting the education process, understanding things like our ELL population, understanding special ed requirements, talking about mandates that are unfunded. I think that's also something that maybe board improvement could help us. It might be materials PowerPoint that you guys put together and we all go out to PTAs and deliver that, but I think a strategy should be discussed in terms of not only us figuring out how we can look at this long-term, but beginning the education process with the community members or improving our education process with the community.
Good idea. The third item, item C, discussion of parameters resolution related to bond refunding, we are going to withdraw this evening and revisit at a future meeting. That takes us to the approval of board meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of February 28, 2012 and March 4, 2012? Mr. McDonough?
I'm sorry, I lost my notes here. It was the...
Hi, if you want me to go.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Got to get it, sorry.
This is minor, just in Finance and Operations Committee, the first paragraph, we, we learned we would be in negative arbitrage. Is that, it says earned? We earned?
Thank you. It should be learned.
Okay.
There it is.
Sorry, that's minor, but I think it's important. We learned we'd be in negative arbitrage. The pension too, is this, John, sorry, I'm going to, I need a minute to scroll down.
Dueling minutes.
Dueling minutes. Okay, I have it. Go ahead. Further down about currently the district has paid, it says one and a half percent of the pension costs? Isn't that .58 or it's very, it's not one and a half? I just wanted to get the correct percentage there.
We pay .58 for employer contribution and then there's a 0.66 we pay for the THIS. So, so the combination of those two is about a 1.1.
Oh, okay.
Mr. McDonough, you ready to go?
Got it, I'm sorry about that. February 28, Finance and Operations Committee report by Mr. Collins says they met with bond counsel. We didn't meet with bond counsel, we met with bond advisor, William Blair, the representative of William Blair.
This, actually, this is always a term that I've always found curious, that our school district refers to the investment banking firm of William Blair as bond counsel when in the industry, the bond counsel is actually the attorney that you hire for a, whatever opinion that you're, you're, you're asking the attorney to give you a fairness opinion or whatever. And, and I think it's kind of a, I think this is more of a terminology question. I mean, is this an accepted term within the education community that you call your, your investment banker, bond counsel? Because that generally refers to an attorney.
I have heard it used to describe someone like Elizabeth Hennessy. I have heard the term bond counsel used, but we could correct that for you if you'd like.
Are we, is this enough semantics for one evening?
Any other additions or corrections to either of these minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as corrected. Moving on to the board committee reports, we can first hear from Maria Hirsch on the Performance Management Committee.
Well, Mr. Prunow has shared our, probably the largest part of our discussion at the Performance Management Committee meeting and that was looking at the staffing for Human Resources Department. Current staffing is Mr. Hellman. We have one coordinator, we have an administrative assistant and we have a substitute employee coordinator, somebody who coordinates all of our subs for the district. That's actually, I think, a halftime person. When we look at the totality of the services that need to be provided by the Human Resources Department, it's, we, the assessment is that it's understaffed. I think if we were to look at what services are, fall into the area of Human Resources, Mr. Hellman, if you can help me out here, I want to make sure I do it. We do all hiring, all performance evaluations, which that piece of it has significantly changed due to recent legislation. We do all health insurance, sign-ups and all of the paperwork with all of the new employees, ensuring that they're currently enrolled. We don't actually do the phone calls for, but we do do some phone calls in support of all of our staff in terms of their benefits coordination.
The new employee piece would be carried out through us and then once it shifts over into the actual utilization of the benefit piece, that, that person was shifted in, in department over to finance. That would be Audrey Reed. However, there is a great deal of coordination between the two departments in the facilitation of that process.
Okay. We do all of our labor relations, we do all of our contract interpretation for all of our building principals and staff out of your office. I'm sure I'm going to miss some highlights of the big things that you're responsible for, but there is a significant number of pieces of the business and 1,100 employees that touch your office, if that's inaccurate.
One of the big ones that I think needs to be talked about is simply the amount of paperwork that is processed due to lane changes associated with transcripts and keeping up with teacher certification and requirements along with the certification associated with some of our PSRP positions. So, that part of it is kind of the tedious, non-glamorous, behind-the-scenes piece that if it were not to happen, would be very difficult for us to continue moving forward and there would be many very unhappy employees associated with lack of, of movement associated with the contract.
I think that the summation, I'm trying to give some examples of some of the things that the HR department is providing services for now, but the biggest change, I would say, in the last year is really the teacher evaluation system. We've got a principal evaluation system that's changing next year, this year and next year as well. And the paperwork and the requirements that have been placed based on the new legislation. We talked about the definition and the creation of the RIF list and making sure that that's done properly. There's just a huge amount of work that has been placed on, on the department. So, we were talking about staffing. We also recognize however, that we're sitting here talking about budget cuts. So, it's not like the administration was recommending and saying that we, you know, are asking for more staff. It's not that the board is looking at necessarily adding more staff in the HR department. I would say that the impetus for this was, we recognize that there are new requirements being placed on Human Resources because of SB seven and the Performance Management Committee talked about it in a whole systemic way. We would like, our, our long-term goal is to have a highly effective Human Resources Department where we do excellent hiring, we have low turnover, we're hiring the right people for the right jobs and that we are providing great support and thorough and thorough support and training for our teacher evaluators and our principal evaluators as well. There's a lot of work there that's very, very important. This is managing the capital in the system and we want to make sure we do a good job on that. So...
And Mrs. Hirsch, it's also being responsive to our employees based on...
Right. So, it's, it's, it's a long-term approach, trying to come up with the right model for what Human Resources Group should look like. Resources Group should look like. In terms of an education reform update, the Sequence for Honorable Dismissal List, I think, has been done and distributed to the union leadership. That's the list that we'll have to unfortunately be using for looking at making reductions. This was a significant effort, I think, out of the Human Resources Department, based on the new categories and looking at evaluations. The other big initiative that we have, due again to legislation, unfunded mandate, is the administrative team involvement in teacher evaluation training for the summer. There's online required training for each person who evaluates a teacher. It's 40 hours of online training, and that is just coming from ISB. That is not training and discussion and collaboration on what Elmhurst is looking for in the teachers that we're hiring. And so I believe the administration is looking to add some additional time to make sure that we have good discussion and consistency across all of our building principals in the types of staff that we're looking for, people that are invested in child, in our kids, in professional learning communities, in collaborative work environment, and those kind of things. We also reviewed our Human Resource Department District Performance Indicators. We've taken a quick look at those, and then we started to piece together all of the District Performance Indicators across all the areas of the business, and we're going to continue to do that. We actually are extending an invitation to our fellow board members, our April Performance Management Meeting. We started looking at the overall District Performance Indicators, and we felt that it would be a very appropriate discussion and get all board members' input on what those DPIs are, what we're missing, and we were hoping to extend an invitation to the cabinet members, the teams who are responsible for these performance indicators as well. So that's something that we had talked about. It looks like, based on a look that I'm getting, maybe that wasn't, we didn't get that communicated back to the team. Not sure.
What date?
April 12th is our Performance Management Committee Meeting. And finally, we looked at, just a quick revisit of the superintendent's evaluation timeline to make sure that we were on track and able to complete that in a timely manner. I think the result of looking at those dates and our timeline is we were looking to see if we could add one closed session for the board to discuss the superintendent's summative evaluation and the board's evaluation, and we were looking at the date of May 16 for that. That's it.
Mr. Collins, Finance and Operations.
I think we can make this pretty quick, since many of the items we discussed in committee are being discussed in front of the full board this evening. We talked to Ms. Elizabeth Hennessy, our bond counsel from William Blair, about several opportunities. First of all, the opportunity to refinance some of the 2006 referendum debt and potentially save the taxpayers some money. We will bring that, that was on the agenda tonight, we'll bring that up at a future board meeting. Unfortunately, the Federal Reserve met last Tuesday and came out with a statement that said the economy doesn't look all that bad, so interest rates spiked over 40 basis points in 48 hours. So our refinancing opportunity, while it did not evaporate, is greatly reduced, and therefore, kind of eased the sense of urgency on that topic. The other thing we talked about is our critically low fund balance in our Capital Projects Fund to keep our buildings maintained the way they should be, that our roofs don't leak and that they're safe. Ms. Hennessy found an opportunity of borrowing capacity for approximately $2 million in our life safety account, and that is something that, there's a lot of paperwork that needs to be filed, it takes months and months, and when we see, when the paperwork is complete and we see an opportunity there, we'll come to the full board for authorization to issue that debt, to fund that, fund that account and provide us with needed capital to last us maybe a couple of more years. That's, yeah, I think that's all the topics we discussed at our, regarding refinancing and financing options at our committee meeting. We also met for the first time with Ms. Linderman, who you met tonight, all of you that remain, and she went through that presentation. We discussed the assumptions that PMA had made in their financial model. We tweaked some of them, and she came back this evening with our suggestions incorporated into her model. We also discussed the needs to reduce certified and non-certified staff that we spent the majority of our meeting this evening discussing. We also discussed facility usage fees that we brought up this evening. The Finance Committee will be hosting a meeting with all the people that use our facilities, they'll be invited to the meeting. We'll present to them what our costs look like versus the rent that they're currently paying, listen to their concerns, and work out a new fee schedule with our community. We also discussed District Performance Indicators as they relate to Finance and Operations, and we'll be forwarding those on to the Board Improvement and Committee. And we also have another item on the agenda this evening, a little further down in transportation contracts, as Mr. Welton continues to make sure that we are paying as little as possible for the service or the outside services that we use. He rebid the bus contracts. One of our bus providers will remain the same, the other will be new. And I guess all I have to add to that is, anytime you change your provider of something that is as logistical and important as buses, while the district will do their very best to make sure that there are no snafus, please, in the fall, bear with our new bus provider. They're saving us some money. We also had TIF on the agenda, which was deferred to future meetings. We have had some discussion with the committee on the City Council that has, is in charge of moving the TIF forward. I'd say we, our relationship has improved dramatically. We're working with one another, and there will be an opportunity to meet and discuss things further within the coming months as their process moves forward. And then we also discussed the FY 13 budget, which, again, provided the majority of the discussion this evening, so.
Thank you. Ms. Ebner, Curriculum and Instruction.
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on March 7. We talked about the English Language Learner Program, ELL, talked about the number of students in that program, and it's grown to 500. And this is an example of state mandates that are not funded. We have 500 ELL students, and under requirements indicated by the state, we need to offer, in some cases, instruction in the student's first language. This is called a Transitional Bilingual Education, TBE, if there are 20 or more students of the same language in one academic center. There's another state mandate with schools with 19 or fewer ELL students of the same language in one location. There's a requirement to provide a Transitional Program of Instruction, TPI. And another mandate is that identified ELL students are entitled to three years of service. So we discussed the new requirements and how to be in compliance with these requirements. And we also talked about two different models that the board in the future should discuss, models of helping ELL students develop proficiency in their native language as well as learning English. It's more of a goal of bilingualism and biliteracy. So there are two models about bilingualism and biliteracy that I think the full board could discuss in the future for this growing ELL population. We also talked about our District Performance Indicators, our academic District Performance Indicators. We've been talking about this over the past several months, and we will forward these indicators on to the Performance Management Committee. You'll have a long list. Okay. We also talked about setting the vision for future STEM program in our district. STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. Kathleen Wilkie talked about some of the STEM activity that is already going on in our district. The board, another to-do for the board is to start discussions on the vision for STEM in our district. Meanwhile, York High School is planning a STEM event in November, this fall, and they've expressed a need to have community input or outside experts' input for appropriate STEM activities for that event. And as school liaison to York, I'm going to help, and any board member can help too, help them identify community members with professional knowledge and experience to make the event very meaningful for our students. One of the curriculum and instruction updates from Charles Johns was the Learning Alternative Program. This is for certain students that have been expelled in the past. We have done an outplacement, but this Learning Alternative Program is an in-house program that is more cost-efficient, and the pilot program was done this past year and was successful. So the administration is, would like this to become a permanent alternative. Board action is not required on this. It's really an FYI, right, Dave? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
It's for students that have been suspended.
I'm sorry, did I say?
We, in the minutes that were posted, I didn't, sorry, I caught this earlier and I didn't come back to it. I think it's, I want to make that clear. These are for students that have had some kind of infraction, and they have been suspended, and they are evaluated and recommended for the program. It is not for students who have been expelled. Sorry.
Okay. York textbook adoptions, we'll be talking, that's on the consent agenda tonight. New textbooks are on review between now and April 24. There are also a list of supplemental texts at the middle school that are on review. And upcoming meeting topics, we'll be talking about professional learning communities next month in April, and the Reach Gifted Program will be addressed in May.
If I could ask a question now, instead of pulling something off the consent agenda to talk about it, the textbook adoptions is a particular sore spot for a number of parents, and I'm sure you had this discussion already about the constant march of addition after addition after addition, which seems to raise the price and cause the replacement of books that can no longer be sold back to the district. Did that topic come up?
We didn't talk too much about that, but I guess Charles is a better, you could answer that better with the different additions.
I think one of the conversations we had this year was general costs related to the parents in terms of textbooks in general. And Diana spoke extensively, the principal of the high school spoke extensively with her leadership team, to look for ways that we can start to reduce costs. If books had minimal use in a classroom, maybe we don't need to purchase them, particularly with so many resources online. Are there other avenues that we can use without violating copyright laws in which students can access similar content? I don't know if we actually talked about the constant march of textbooks because of updating by textbook publishers. That's something that's been a historic problem in our field. Textbook publishers can issue a new edition with just 10% new content. The problem is, in a history class, 10% new content could be anything that's happened since 2011, 2001 and the 9/11 catastrophe. So there are some cases where we need to update. I don't, this is something where I have to keep an eye on. We're looking at a number of different innovative ways that we can reduce costs for families in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stufen, Board Improvement and Policy.
Thank you. This is actually not a board committee report because we are meeting tomorrow, and this committee hasn't met since the last board report. However, as promised, we were bringing for the full board approval, particular items. So what I want to do is give you a little bit of the background. The Board of Education is responsible for holding itself accountable for providing appropriate educational governance to all of our stakeholders. As reflected in our policy 2:120, the board will conduct self-evaluations with the goal of continuous improvement. So the Board Improvement Policy Committee has been engaged in the development of our board self-evaluation survey. The survey questions were designed based on several different templates, of which is IASB, as well as our committee structure survey. The survey questions really are assessing how well we are performing our governance priorities that result from our board strategy meetings that we held in June of 2011 and that were outlined in our PowerPoint presentation that's previously been approved by the board. So the recommendation is, is it's the desire of the Board Improvement Policy Committee to bring the results of our work to the full Board of Education for approval. We've presented the board self-evaluation survey in the board docs, as well as an email earlier so that you had more time to look at the survey. Precedent that was sent by, was set by the Performance Management Committee that we liked, that we thought that we should do that and give board members more time to really noodle over and think through, you know, what we're asking you for approval on. So that survey is in board docs, and what we would like is for the full board approval of that survey, for our board self-evaluation, and distribution of the survey in the April-May timeframe. The second piece that we'd like approval is for this Board Improvement Policy Committee to begin working on our board retreat, at which time, we would be talking about the results of this board self-evaluation survey.
Are you looking for action from us this evening, or consensus, or?
We, I thought we needed full board approval of the survey and the distribution and to move forward in the committee to plan the retreat. So...
Would you like to make a motion?
So, yes, I would like to, is it, do we have to vote, or just can we do consensus on this, Susan?
We can do consensus. That's fine. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Hirsch.
Yeah, I think some of the best work that the board did getting started was the first couple meetings that we had where we all sat down and talked about, for our four new board members, all the lessons they had learned in the campaign trail, what the citizens were talking about, what taxpayers were worried about, what parents were worried about, what Mr. Collins and I and Mrs. Derone had heard and had experienced previously, and I think we came up with some great governance priorities. I think each committee, I think we've all tried to live by those governance priorities, and I think it's totally appropriate that we revisit it at the end of the year, our first year together as a board, and say, you know, how did we do and where can we improve? So I think it's a great idea. I think it, holding ourselves accountable. And I think that the idea of a board retreat has been germinating, and there's a number of areas related to District Performance Indicators and kind of storming around those and coming to some kind of agreement. So I think that's the appropriate time to do that.
Anyone else? So we have consensus to go ahead with the survey as presented and to begin to plan, commission the committee to plan our board retreat sometime in June?
Yes.
That concludes our committee reports, which brings us to the superintendent's consent agenda. On it this evening, we have the personnel report, financial reports, acceptance of the donation to Edison Elementary School consisting of some landscaping. We have acceptance of a donation to Jefferson consisting of two basketball backboard systems. We have the fairly legal approval to begin the fiscal '13 budget process, which in fact we've already done, but this grants the administration our permission to do that. We have tucked in our consent agenda the approval of the themes instructional grants, which are under lock and key until the foundation is able to present them in their own manner. We have the... We have the approval of the long-awaited 2012-2013 school calendar. We have the approval to display proposed high school and middle school materials as referenced earlier, the approval of the membership renewal of the IHSA, High School Association. We have the approval, second reading and adoption of a policy that we've worked on that cleans up our access language in the access to electronic networks. We have the approval of a first reading of five different policies containing punctuation or legal references, corrections of typos only, that sort of thing, in several different sections. Does anyone wish to withdraw an item from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none?
If I could just highlight one, just to bring attention. Kickoff for Kids, which is a new nonprofit organization, is donating the backboards to Jefferson, their adjustable basketball court backboards. They intend to hopefully raise enough funding to do it to all seven elementary schools. So, I just wanted to highlight that. It wasn't just Jefferson. They want to do it for all the schools, and this is their first, first school, but the intention is to go to all seven.
And we're very appreciative of that. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, Ms. Hirsch?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through O.
Is there a second? Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. Collins to approve the consent agenda. All those, can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Walsh?
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Erone?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. That takes us to the action items on the superintendent's agenda. The first item is the approval of the bid for regular transportation. Is there a motion, please?
Sure.
Mr. Collins?
Let me just get there. There we go. Sorry for the delay.
I move that the Board of Education approve a three-year contract with Lakeview Bus Lines, bid number 12-04, for regular transportation services.
Moved by Mr. Collins, seconded by Ms. Hirsch to approve the regular transportation services contract with Lakeview Bus Lines. Is there any discussion? Mr. Collins?
I can ask Mr. Welton just to explain why this company won, who they are, and what the plan for the fall will be, and especially to get this new bus company up to speed to minimize any inconvenience for, for any of our riders.
Lakeview Bus is a smaller bus company, I would say. They, they're in Bellwood. Their bus barn location is 3.3 miles from our boundaries. My team went out and visited their bus barn. They will have all brand-new buses servicing our regular education students starting in the fall. We will, once approved, the Lakeview staff will come out and be meeting with our schools about the routes and getting comfortable. They don't foresee any problem with having enough drivers, and they will order the buses as soon as it's approved here. So, like I said, the buses will be new. They will have video cameras in the front and the back. They're going to have GPS to monitor where the buses are at all times. The owners, we've met the owners, they are focused on customer service. They currently do, I would say, three other similar-sized schools, or maybe a little smaller than us, but about three, three school districts that they're, they're currently handling. I know they, they are anxious to get started, and are, and we will get there, expecting to provide a high level of service. But as, as you said earlier, you know, transitions are always, you know, there could be bumps in the road, but nothing that they can't work through.
And there, there were three qualified bidders that bid on this transportation service contract, and Lakeview was the low bid of the three.
Actually, we only received two bids.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, the other bid was from First Student. Peters is here in the back. They have provided us a good service for, we've been with First Student, Lead Law, for a number of years, and provided, they've provided a good service. We were required to bid this out by law, and Lakeview was the lowest responsible bidder.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to approve the transport, regular transportation bid. Mrs. Walsh, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Erone?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Erone?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the special education contract, transportation contract. Is there a motion? Mr. Collins?
I move that the Board of Education approve a three-year contract with Cottage Hill Operating Company for bid number 12-05, Special Education Transportation Services.
Is there a second? Moved by Mr. Collins, seconded by Ms. Hirsch to approve the Special Education Transportation Bid, and is there any discussion?
Yes, just to say that this is our current provider, who also, of the two bidders, was the lowest bid. And it's our current provider. I suspect that we won't see much change at all.
That is correct. We've been happy with the service that Cottage Hill provides. They're right over there on St. Charles. Mr. Peacock and his daughter, I believe, have provided us a good service for, for many years, and they were the lowest responsible bidder, and they work closely with Meg and her department, and will continue to provide us the same service.
Any other discussion? Motion is to approve the Special Education Transportation Bid with Cottage Hill. Mrs. Walsh, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Erone?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the first reading of a new policy, 505, on professionalism. Is there a motion, please? Ms. Stufan?
I would like that the Board of, I moved that the Board of Education accept as a first reading a new policy, 5:05 professionalism, which will become effective at the time of its adoptions, and subsequently be added to the policy manual of the Board of Education, Section 5 Personnel.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Ebner. Is there any discussion?
I thought, since it's a new policy, I would give a little bit of background. And it really came from, you know, Board discussions, as well as new administration, that we really wanted to, you know, set the precedent, that we saw, you know, there were, as, as the Board was looking at the policy, and they spent three years of adopting it just, you know, recently, and the administration is looking at ensuring that the administrative procedures are in place to support those policies, that between the administration and the Board, we really felt as though we wanted to have a policy that defined professionalism for this district.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Next item is a new policy on student teachers. Stufan?
I move that the Board of Education accept as a first reading the new policy 5:260, student teachers, which will become effective at the time of its adoption, and subsequently be added to the policy manual of the Board of Education, Section 5 Personnel.
Is there a second? Moved by Ms. Stufan, seconded by Mr. McDonough to approve a new policy on student teachers. Is there any discussion?
Once again, since it's a new policy, you know, what, what we wanted to say is, in February 2011, the former Board had adopted the new policy manual, revisited the entire manual, and spent long hours working on it. And I know that they had chosen not to have this policy for student, for student teachers. But as the administration was then, once again, looking at administrative procedures to support the Board manual, the Board Policy Manual, excuse me, and we have a precedent of accepting and working with student teachers, which is great within our community and with our college in, in our community, that we, that the administration recommended that we adopt the student-teacher policy. It also, there was an update in the press that came through, that of course, the policy committee has to look at all of the IASB policy updates. So, it really was the impetus for us to say, you know, what do we want to do with student teachers? And because we, you know, are so good at working with student teachers, we thought that we should have a policy in place to reflect it.
Any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to accept the first reading of a new policy on student teachers. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. We have a final revision of a policy, Board Policy Development. Is there a motion, please?
Yes.
Ms. Stufan?
I move that the Board of Education accept as a first reading the revisions to policy 2:240, Board Policy Development, which will become effective at the time of its adoption, and subsequently added to the policy manual of the Board of Education, Section 2, Board of Education.
Is there a second? Moved by Ms. Stufan, seconded by Mr. McDonough to accept the first reading of a revision to our Board Policy Development policy. Would you care to elaborate, Mrs. Stufan?
Yes. We've talked about this in the past, but I think it's very important for us to note the reason why this, this policy had a slight revision. First off, I want to note that all policies will be brought in front of the full Board for first and second readings. So, all the Board members will have an opportunity to not only see new policy, but to be able to provide input, even if you're not in the policy committee. Okay? But because there are so many policy revisions that are coming through, we were looking at how do we streamline the process? So, what we had decided is that when there are legal or cross-references that our superintendent would be, with his administration, would be reviewing those, and if they are just those slight revisions of cross-references, it will go in front of the full Board, but we will not be reviewing it and discussing it at the policy committee. So, with...
It's a little more than, it's any non-substantive modification or correction. That happens to me, there's a wealth of those legal references, for what it's worth.
Correct. So, what we wanted to do is ensure that our streamlined process would be, be within legal compliance for us. So, our lawyers recommended that we slightly modify this policy, so that we can, say, in an emergency or through the press publication reviews, where there's non-substantive modifications or corrections, that we can have them recommended from the superintendent directly to the full Board.
Any other discussions or questions about this, what we used to call policy on policy? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. And finally, we have the approval of a resolution approving the acceptance of bequests. Ms. Hirsch?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution approving acceptance of bequests.
Is there a second? Let's have a voice. Let's, let's have somebody say.
I'll second.
Second. Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Ms. Stufan to approve the acceptance of, the resolution approving acceptance of bequests. Would you like to speak to it, Ms. Hirsch?
I would. I am going to, I realize it's a late hour, but I think that this is something that is worth noting, so I'm going to read what we have on Board Docs, our rationale for accepting this gift. Corinne Johnson was a retired teacher at York High School. She passed away last September. In the fall of 1958, Ms. Johnson joined the York High School faculty, where she taught for 32 years. During her tenure at York, she taught English IX, English IX honors, college writing skills, and English literature, 12. Ms. Johnson was instrumental in restarting the collage magazine at the high school, which is now known as Mirrors. After her retirement in 1990, Ms. Johnson played an integral part in starting the archives at York. Ms. Johnson was a member of the Elmhurst Chapter of the League of Women Voters, the American Daughters of Sweden, and was a volunteer at the Citizen Advocacy Center. After her death, the district was a recipient of the generosity of Ms. Johnson. The district was named as a beneficiary of a trust left by Ms. Johnson, as well as a beneficiary of an annuity. The exact language of the trust designated the district as a beneficiary is as follows: $20,000 directly to the York High School Library in honor of Ruth Kinney, former head and a wonderful friend for many years, in response to the need for multiple copies of selected titles to provide for group reading and discussion. Blessings to you, dear Ruth. The annuity was left to York High School English Department, and they've chosen to establish an annual departmental award in Ms. Johnson's honor, which will recognize and reward with a $500 scholarship, a senior student who has demonstrated outstanding qualities in English classes and extracurriculars. I think this is an unusual gift, at least since I've been sitting at the Board table. This is the first time that we received a, I guess, a bequest of this manner, but it clearly shows, not only did we, our students and our community benefit from the commitment of this teacher who taught at our high school for 32 years, but also she is donating, and hopefully, you know, the spirit of her commitment will live on at York, and our future students will know and learn a little bit about Ms. Johnson and her commitment to our community. I think this is a wonderful gift.
I agree. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries. That brings us to our upcoming meetings. Each of the committees will be meeting. Committee meetings are typically at 7:00, with the exception of the Finance Committee, which meets at 6:30. We have our regular Board of Education meeting scheduled for April 10th and April 24th, which is also our reorganization meeting. And we have scheduled an additional meeting on April 3rd for, to discuss budget reductions. Time to be determined, Mr. Purnell?
I would suggest, we may need a closed session on, on that date, so I'm suggesting 6:00 for a closed session, and then the regular Board meeting at 7:30. If that's acceptable to the Board.
Seeing no objections, we can plan on that. Are there any other Board communications? Ms. Stufan?
The only one that I was going to note is the Lend Pension Dinner and Dialogue is tomorrow evening, so Mrs. Hirsch and I are attending. It is held at Fenton High School. They're going to have their students performing, which is, I think, was wonderful. It is not only Board members, administration, mayor, city managers, it is union representation. Actually, the president of IEA is going to be there. There's a presentation by Mr. W. James Farrell, who is the chairman of the Civics Committee, who's been working with state legislators extensively in Springfield. And so, it really is a collaboration from everyone that's involved, so that there is a true, healthy dialogue with respect to all elements of pension and pension reform in anticipation for Governor Quinn's April 17 deadline. in anticipation for Governor Quinn's April 17 deadline for his pension working group to provide a recommendation.
Thank you. Any other board communications? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. McDonough.
I'd second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Thank you for sticking in there with us.